Okay, I'd like to welcome all of you to our Thursday, August the 13th, 2020 virtual special meeting. And I'd like to also welcome those that are viewing this meeting tonight. I understand that there are some people that are viewing this, our, our meeting tonight. So I'd like to welcome you. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and we will have a moment of silence. So if you'll have a moment of silence, please. Amen. Thank you. At this time, I would like Mrs. Williams, if she will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. You may be in a position where you can stand or not, but anyway, Ms. Williams, if you will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States.
The States of America.
And to the Republic.
The Republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Divisible.
With liberty.
And justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. And at this time, Ms. Williams, if you will read the mission statement, I would appreciate it.
Yes. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students and that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I'll have the clerk to do the roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Ms. Allen? I'm present, but just so you know, Duncan Hines is trying to get into the zone.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mrs. Hines, has she gotten in yet? Did you get in? I see you though. Okay.
I see her, yeah.
Mr. Lamb?
Present.
Reverend Patillo?
Present.
Mrs. Schumake?
Present.
Mrs. Williams? Mrs. Williams, is that Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Parent?
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for tonight. What is the board's pleasure? You've had Tam, you've had time to review the agenda, but is the board's pleasure to have a motion for approval? Motion's been made and Ms. Atkinson seconded. Any discussion?
No, Ms. Atkinson made the motion and Tamra seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Hines? I don't know if she's in yet.
She's in, but I don't know if her, I see her, but I don't know if her.
It's her mic.
Oh, it's her mic.
Okay. Um, Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right. So the, the agenda is now approved and we go to the first item, Bill Business, and I will call on Reverend Patillo if he will read the motion for closed meeting.
I move that the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purpose: Discussion concerning the performance.
No, there's another one. That's the last one.
Consideration of requests for religious exemption from school attendance as permitted under subsection A point two.
Uh oh. Consideration of requests for religious exemption from school attendance as permitted under subsection A point two. Do I have a motion? This is a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Angela Allen.
Ms. Allen seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes? Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
I'm still not available. Um, Mr. Lamb?
I'm here.
Okay. Is yours a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
All right, we are now in closed session and Dean, you will have to close out those that do not need to be in the meeting and so that we can, we can enter into a closed meeting. Thank you.
We'll move you into closed session at this time.
Thank you.
All right, we're out of closed session and we're recording. Mr. Parent, you're muted.
You won't let, okay, all right. Um, this is 3.2, roll call vote, consideration of a religious exemption, case number 202101. What is the board's pleasure?
This is Allen, move for approval.
Second.
Hans?
All right, motion's been made and second, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk? Roll call vote. You're muted.
I'm sorry. Before I do the roll call, can you tell me who made the motion to come out of closed session and if it was unanimous?
Reverend Patillo.
Reverend Patillo.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson? Ms. Atkinson here?
Does she come in?
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Hello?
Ms. Atkinson, is yours a yes vote for the religious exemption?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Mrs. Williams?
Chairman Parent?
Yes.
What's the protocol if we're, if we're knocked off? Is there a phone number or, I mean, can we be sent something?
I'm gonna IT address that. I'm not sure. He just said, once you leave, then you have to manually, and I don't, I don't know that procedure. So you're gonna have to, Dean or whoever is.
Yeah, once, um, um, once, once, once someone leaves the closed session, when they come back in, they have to, um, they have to put themselves back into that closed session. But, um, you can certainly call me for sure, um, Ms. Atkinson. I can give you, I'll text you that number.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the.
Mr. Chairman, may I interject? I'm sorry, but I think we still have to do the closed meeting certification in open sessions. So we do need to take the roll call and have the members certify the matters in closed section. We're limited to those that we went in on.
Very good. Thank you for.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Reverend Patillo, you wanna go ahead and read the motion again?
Yes, sir. I move that each board member is certified to the best of his knowledge on the matters which are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements in which we're identifying the motion to go into closed meeting or heard, discussed, or considered during the proceeding closed meeting.
All right, Reverend Patillo made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Allen seconded.
Duncan Hines seconded. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Now, Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call vote, please?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yeah.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
All right, Mr. Carroll, we've already voted on 3.2. Do we need to vote on that again?
No, sir, I don't believe so. No, sir.
All right, we're gonna go to 3.3, which is roll call vote, consideration of a religious exemption, case number 20202102. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Ms. Allen second.
Ms. Williams moved for approval and I think it was Atkinson that made the second.
Ms. Allen.
Allen.
Ms. Allen made the second. Thank you for correcting me. Um, any, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yeah.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake? Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a student representative and an alternate to the school board. And I'm going to ask Reverend Patillo because he and Dr. Bracy interviewed the students, and I'm gonna turn this over to Reverend Patillo to introduce, um, the young man that is going to be the representative and I think, and the alternate. And they were invited to attend. Uh, I don't know if they're here or not.
They were invited to be with, to be with, to view the meeting.
Okay, all right. Reverend Patillo, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Parent. We interviewed two dynamic candidates, Mr. Miles Hunt and Ms. Jaden Johnson. They were both extraordinary students, uh, very similar GPAs. Uh, they both were extraordinary in the community, in their community service. Uh, but based on the interview and what we got from both students, um, I recommend that Miles Hunt be named as a school board representative from Churchland High School and Ms. Jaden Johnson be named as the alternate from I C Norfolk.
All right, we are recommending that Miles S. Hunt, uh, be our representative and he is from, uh, Charleston High School. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, move for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And Ms. Allen. Ms. Allen, was that Allen or Atkinson?
Ms. Allen seconded.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, you've had an opportunity to read both of them and both of them are outstanding. And I want to thank Reverend Patillo and Dr. Bracy. Um, I could not make the, the interview because of previous, um, engagement. But, uh, at this time, um, since a motion's been made in second and I hear no discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Ms. Atkinson in?
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yeah.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
And we would like to, uh, welcome, um, Miles Hunt as the representative and, uh, look forward to both of our students, um, participating. And, um, hopefully one day we will all be back together in person and that, uh, we'll get to know each other, each of these students, um, better. The next item on the agenda is 3.5. It's discussion and it's the school name change overview. And I have asked Mr. Carroll, our attorney, to review the process with the board. Mr. Carroll, would you please do that at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the school board. Uh, we've passed around these policies in the past. Um, the first threshold issue that would need to occur would be the board as a body would have to determine that it's appropriate to engage in a renaming process, which. I'm sorry, was somebody asking a question? I couldn't hear.
I think Ms. Atkinson was.
Was she trying to die?
Yeah, she's trying to get in.
So, so the first step in that process. The first step in the process would be to determine as a body that it's appropriate to engage in the process. Uh, in, in, in going through that determination, you don't need to decide a particular school, all particular schools, uh, harsh parts of buildings, just that you want to engage in the process as a, as a threshold issue. Um, you can simply resolve that it's appropriate to do so. And then, after that point, the chairman of the school board would appoint a committee comprised of three members and select a chairman on that committee who will then, um, has a requirement according to policy to hold two separate public meetings. Um, now, that committee's purpose, based on the policies, is to receive input from the public. And there's a really specific way that the policies direct how to receive that information. Policies require that the, uh, name suggestions from the public be submitted in writing and directed to the clerk of the school board with that person's name, address, and then the rationale for the suggested, uh, name to be placed on a particular school. Um, but that all gets submitted to the committee level, whose job it is then to go through that data and those suggestions and come back to the board again after two public committee hearings to make a recommendation to the school board for a board level vote on the name change.
Okay. Um, I noticed that we have it under discussion and this would be, uh, would this be a time that the board could discuss because the appropriateness, the board would have to agree this evening or we would, we would have to put it off until, um, next month for a roll call vote. Or can the board, can we check, can the board go ahead and agree tonight that this would be appropriate? And then the chair can go ahead and name the members so they can start to work.
The policy doesn't necessarily speak to having to have a vote of the board. Um, so I, so like my interpretation would be that if the board agrees as a body, as a whole through its discussion, that it's appropriate to appoint a committee, then I think the chairman has the authority at that point to appoint the committee.
Well, then I will ask board members, do any of you have any reservations of moving forward with, uh, the appropriateness of renaming, uh, the schools? A school, a, or schools? Anybody have any reservations about moving forward?
None.
No, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, then we will move forward. The next item on the agenda, then, uh, since you have a, agreed to move forward, uh, with the process of, um, school name changes and Doc, and Mr. Carroll, our attorney, has reviewed that. Uh, the panel members of the school name change, I'd like at this time to, uh, appoint Mrs. Costello Williams, uh, to chair this. Mrs. Williams has been on such committee in the past and I would like for her to chair, uh, the meeting. I would like Ms. Akisha Atkinson to serve with her as well as Mr. Ted Lamb. The three of them will, um, will, um, begin the process, um, this evening. And, uh, Ms. Williams, I think, uh, Mr. Carroll can forward, I guess, Ms. Atkinson and Mr. Lamb, the, um, the requirements. My expectations, Mrs. Williams, uh, and I guess, um, because I'm pointing you chair, is that this is August, uh, you have, according to the regulations, you, you have to have at least two public hearings and other ways, I guess by, um, I guess Lauren can help you with that and having these hearings that by at least no later, I would hope by the November meeting, if not any later than the December meeting, to have a, to bring back to the chair so that then the chair can then bring this to the board. Do you think that might be possible?
Yes, sir. I, I would like to meet with or discuss with the other members of the committee when we could possibly get together because I would like to begin the public hearings in September, toward the middle of September. And, uh, so we could start the process and then bring our recommendations back to the board probably by the October or November meeting. Um, so I'll talk with, uh, board member Atkinson and board member Ted Lamb to get it when we can meet and when we can get with, uh, Lauren to start the process for the public hearings. Because I know they have to be advertised.
Yes.
And sent out publicly.
Right. And I'm, and I know that all of you have been receiving, Kathy's been very good about forwarding all of the, um, letters and petitions and all of that. So you have been getting all of that from the public already. So.
Yes.
Okay.
I did.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I have, I'm sorry, I have a question real quick before we move on. Ms. Williams, did I cut you off?
Well, I, I was just gonna say that I did receive, I think, the whole board, the three.
Yeah.
Three thousand and some petition signatures.
Yes, right. All right. Ms. Hines, yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, I do have a question about, uh, we've, and I'm sitting here, uh, reading, uh, Mr. Carroll's email that walks us through the entire process. Uh, it says the board needs to determine that it's appropriate to rename a school and that we don't need to decide, um, what we want to rename it. We don't need to decide to rename a particular school. Um, now that we have a committee for this, um, when will the committee come back to what schools or schools are looking at being renamed? And does the full board have to be on board with those schools that are looking to be renamed? Or is this all for the committee and we will all vote on it at one time? Because I do understand that we have, um, the high school. However, we've got two elementary schools that, um, I think would probably benefit from discussion, um, as long as, uh, it, if, if needed. Um, but I'm just, I'm trying to clarify the process.
All right, Mr. Carroll, would you please?
Sure. So there's two policies that play board member Hines and everyone else. And one speaks to naming of the schools generally. And that policy, if anyone wants to go take a look at it, is on the, uh, school board's website. It's FFA dash R. And it starts off with the basic premise that the schools are to be named according to their geographic location. However, the board in its discretion, and that's what the exercise we just went through was, may then decide to name a school after an individual. But before it does so, it has to go through this process. Really, what we have here is the schools already have the name. This is not a newly created school. So we're going through a school renaming. And that policy is a separate one. It's FFA on our website. And so, once the school board determines that it's appropriate to, uh, consider a renaming process in general, to look at all the schools in the division, one, two, or three of the schools in the division. It's not all that specific. It just gives the board the discretion to say, we would like to engage in this process. It's then up to the committee then to go do that research that you're talking about and solicit that input from the public. And then the committee does the fact finding, the decision making engages with the public directly through their two public hearings and solicitation process. And then would we make a recommendation back to the board that, uh, you know, dear big board, we've reviewed all of these, uh, all the schools in Portsmouth. We've selected these facilities or these schools as a, as renaming candidates. Uh, we believe based on our research that, you know, X, Y, and Z names are appropriate and we would recommend that to you at this time for discussion. And then, of course, you would have a vote after you receive that information at the very next meeting, uh, up, down, or either way. Now, the, the policy does not say that the committee is necessarily limited. Of course, if the board decided after hearing the committee's report that it wanted the committee to further investigate, the board would have the, the authority under the policies to, to ask the committee to, to look at other things. But that's a long way of answering your question to say that it is a committee's duty to, to really investigate, um, these particular facilities, their names, and then, of course, with public input, what to do about it.
So, um, to follow up, Chairman, if I may. Um, so I guess my, let me, let me drill down my question one more. Um, this committee that has just been made, are they looking at three schools? Are they looking at one school? And are we allowed to say which three schools that they're talking about?
I do, I mean, I do not know. Just as he said, the committee will have to meet to decide that. Uh, I know that we have, I know that you have received, all of us have received information concerning one school, but I have not received any information of any other schools. But that is going to be, that's gonna be up to Mrs. Williams' committee, uh, and they will need to get together as Mr. Carroll has stated. And they will need to decide the process because whether you're talking about, as I just heard from Mr. Carroll, whether you're talking about a school or several schools, they would have to do, they would have to get all the input from the public and then, and bring that back to, uh, the board. And then, of course, the board has the authority to, you know, you, we can move forward with whatever recommendation, uh, because this is a three panel committee that has, will have to, uh, move forward. And my understanding from Ms. Williams, she would like to get started in September. So, um, I, I, you know, I, I've only heard of, of one school. I've not received, and maybe some of you have received the names of other schools. I have not. Kathy's been very good about sending the, the one school, but I've not heard of any other schools.
Well.
And maybe.
And, and that's the reason my asking, Chairman, is that we, you know, we as a board pretty much agree on the high school bit. Um, but there was one email that went out. I believe it came from, um, Dr. Bracy, if I'm not mistaken, that had two elementary names that were listed there as well. And the board has not discussed them. So my question is, with this committee, are they going in looking at one school or they go and looking at three schools? Or can I ask that? Or am I just waiting for the recommendations of the committee to come back?
Um, Ms. Carroll? Yes, ma'am.
If, if I may say something.
Yeah.
I think, uh, Mr. Carroll explained the process very well as far as the committee. And I, I do remember the, the email about two of the elementary schools.
Yeah, now I remember. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Mention. And I do remember the governor, uh, recommending that those schools with, you know, sort of Confederacy pass, uh, take a look at. So I, I would like the opportunity to get with the, uh, panel members and we discuss it. And then maybe at the, at the meeting following our meeting, uh, board member Duncan Hines, we could either give, share with you a recommendation from the committee to you, to you all.
Yes.
And, and see what, after we do a little more research on that. Because, you know, our, our main focus at this time, I thought, was for the high school. But I, I do recall the email that, that you're talking about as well. So, um, if you would allow the committee to come together to look into all of that a little further.
Yes.
And then because the board still has the final vote on the renaming of the high school or, or any of the schools. We, we simply make the recommendation.
Right.
Yes, I, I just, I, I wanted to be clear on what, um, was being asked of you and what I could be expecting from the committee. I was, I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
Right. Yeah.
All right.
Because it could be a wild.
Ms. Williams, thank you very much.
Well, I mean, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna look at it. We're gonna bring back suggestions, recommendations. And I mean, we need to do a little more research on those two that some were suggesting that we rename. And if the. And if the research shows that they should be put in the pot to be renamed, then, you know, the, the committee will look at that and, and recommend yea or nay. And, and the board can vote and decide.
Right. And Ms. Carroll, you, you had pretty well addressed that. I think it is up to the, the three panel committee to bring back whatever recommendation they're gonna bring back. It's their responsibility. Ms. Williams is the chair. It's their responsibility to do all of the, uh, the research and to bring back a recommendation to the chair and to the board. Is that correct?
That's correct. And they're not limited to one facility or, or more. They could look at three, they could look at five or more.
All right. All right. Any other discussion? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams, Ms. Atkinson, and Mr. Lamb for agreeing to, uh, uh, to move forward. Uh, and the next item is 3.7 and there's discussion of our CTE program update. And I think we have.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Perrin and school board members and Dr. Bracy for giving me this opportunity. And to give me this opportunity to talk to you tonight. I have a couple of documents I'm going to share with the board. One is regarding career and technical education, dual enrollment updates. And then another document is regarding our CTE and dual enrollment, questions and answers regarding the virtual learning. Um, if the board will indulge me for a moment, just to give a shout out to the CT advisory committee on this first slide. Um, the Virginia Department of Education Region Two Advisory Committee Award was sent to the enforcement public school CTE education advisory committee. The award was for exceptional exemplary contribution to support of CT education. The award pointed out that the first CTE signing day highlighted the successful employment placement of students and recognized students who received credentials. The advisory board supports CT students in work-based learning such as internships, apprenticeships, mentoring, and job shattering. Um, this was a, a great award for us. Um, we're very excited about it. The, the CT advisory board members are all very active, um, area stakeholders that have put a lot of work into this. So again, thank you for just giving me this moment to highlight, uh, their award and their accomplishment. If the board, I, I please direct you to the next slide. This gives you a little overview of all the CTE courses and the variety of career pathways that we offer our students in enforcement public schools. These courses are based on career trends and opportunities. If you notice, um, since 2015, we have offered 25 new courses. That's a lot of courses, um, to be perfectly frank with you. Um, and also we give a lot of completers in this. If you notice with the TV production, cosmetology, teachers for bar, entrepreneurship. There are all pathways that lead students to a credential and hopefully a career. So they're not just jobs we're throwing up on, I should say, courses we're throwing up on the board. We're actually putting thought in it. We're going by the local career trends and, um, opportunities that the, um, local different area far as Virginia employment and also national employment agencies have shown us that are job growth in the future. So we're very proud of all of these courses. We believe that, um, students enforcement have a variety of opportunities and, um, we hope they're meeting all their expectations. Next slide, please. These next two slides are gonna just show you where our courses are, are basically the, the most students in our different career clusters. There are 16 career clusters. And this gives you an overview of where, um, the student interests are in the different areas and where we have the most. If you notice, for instance, just looking down at the government and public administration, that would be our junior ROTC programs, the Navy, Marine, and those programs, and also Army over at Wilson High School. There's a lot of interest, interest there. Also, we have the science and technology down at the bottom there. That's 335 females in that program, 425 males in that program also. That's a lot of students that are really showing the interest in the STEM programs. And we offer those. If you notice on the previous slide, we have the different programs for as the biotechnology. We can offer geospace if we want, rocket. We have all kinds of programs along with principles of technology that students seem to be gravitating towards. The next slide is our special population. And this gives you a breakdown of what the students are taking there. And the total of all, of both of these students, um, slides is six hun, uh, 6,007 students total. That's a lot of students that we have met the needs of over this last year. If you look at a whole, and we feel like we're continuing to meet those needs with our CT programs. Um, there's, there has not been much of a variation of those numbers over the last four or five years. So we've been pretty constant in that. So we're proud of that. Next slide. And as we're looking at this next slide with the CT certifications, not that I have to mind anyone, but we had this thing called COVID. And this COVID has basically hurt our numbers when you look at the different testing because we weren't able to test in the most, we, basically, we test the most during the months of March, April, and May. That's the end of all of these programs. If a student is in a completer program, the first semester and the second semester, then we have to test them usually that second semester. So while 396 students may seem like a lot of testing, they are. That number probably would have been doubled if we had not hit the COVID. But with that being said, let's look at some of those rates. Our passing rate for all our students with our completer CTE. And just to remind the board, that's when a student has taken two or more classes in a pathway. That's usually a junior or senior that is now testing out because that's something they want to go into. It's a stackable credential. It's not the border or baseline, which we're gonna look at with the workplace. It's something above and beyond. And of that, we have 79.4% passing in that rate, which is very good. If you compare that to the state, we're right at the state level. Um, and then I've also given you the breakdown of the different demographics if you would like to look at that. The following box is the Virginia Workplace Readiness Skills. If I could go back, thank you. Um, and then in that box, those are the tests that we give usually in our econ and personal finance class. That can be 10th graders also. And at first, if you look at the number, you see that we had, if they take the first test, 271 completed, 150 passed. Usually about 50 plus percent passing rate. Then you go down and you see the retake and then the second retake. Again, none of this happened after March, which was a lot of times students would be taking these tests. But don't let the 53.65% fool you. Let's look at the numbers the way they really should be looked at. If you look at completed, 271 tests were completed. Then you look at the pass number on the bottom total of 191. That's how many students that have actually passed the test. Yes, it might have taken them two or three times. But then when you look at actually pass of the 271, that's 70% passing rate. So we're proud to look at that number also. So, you know, the data is where you look at it, but if you look at taking the test, retake, and then the second retake, we've added up to 70% passing rate for our workplace readiness. And we believe that number would have been higher had we not hit COVID. And also remember, standard diploma students have to have a certification. So that number always bumps up to around 90% before this year is out. Next slide, please. Looking at our completer courses, the certifications that are involved, this gives you an idea of the test that we are offering our students. Again, if you look at the childcare, we are offering the early childhood education test. And it lines up across the board. Communications, we're offering the Adobe, et cetera. I don't, I don't want to necessarily read them all because I know we're on time constraints. However, we are lining up with our completers and offering certifications for our students. Um, border culture, we have the greenhouse and the pesticide. We did not have that in the first part of last year as we didn't have a teacher in that position. So we didn't have any tests this, um, form of past year. However, we're looking at growing that program this year. So we feel like we've lined up with every one of our clusters, a certification for our students, which adds to the workplace readiness. So again, it's stackable. And a lot of people say, why do we offer that workplace readiness? Let's go back about six or seven years when the state came in and said we had to have a certification. So what we decided to do was, it was easier to get all of our teachers on board with one test across the board with a test that is implemented and all and embedded in all of our curriculum across the board for CTE. The first 22 competencies of every CTE course is workplace readiness. So it made sense to start off with that one. And that will always be our foundation as we're moving forward with credentials. But we want that to be the minimum standard and give them the stackable credentials that you see on this slide. Next slide, please. One of the, one of the questions I believe the board had was some of our stakeholders. I've tried to line up with our content area and the difference of partners we have in the community. We have a, a very, I think, um, uh, I would say a community that is very involved with, uh, the different programs. Um, in the past, maybe not as much as they have been the last two years. And I want to go back to our CT advisory board. They have really brought a lot of these to the table. Um, we still have Northern Star Credit Union, one of the few school districts in the community and the area for that matter, that has a bank branch that is student-run in a school. We still have that over at Woodrow Wilson. Um, our COE program is very valuable. The school has set up and set aside different placements for our students at our different schools. And, um, that has really been paying off and our schools enjoy that. We also have Autumn Care Nursing Home for our CNA program, which I'll discuss, um, in the next document regarding our virtual reality for us, um, offering the program of CNA. But they have been so valuable. Um, and then also Rite Aid, working with our pharmaceutical program. Um, they are stepping up to the plate. And then if you go down to our trade and industry education area, the shipyard has been one of the biggest, um, input of all of our partnerships recently. We've done so much with that. If you remember four years ago, that's where we were weak. And now we have really grown in that area. So if we move on to the next slide.
Mr. Hill, before you go.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
That's okay. How many, how many students are in Northern Star and the NASA?
Yeah, Northern Star is run by our business, um, industry over there. So you've got the COE students to run that out of the business class. Usually it's the computer information system course and also the accounting class. Um, this last year, if I'm not mistaken, um, Dr. Johnson was sharing with me that we had more bank accounts that were opened up this past year before COVID. We were on a pace to outnumber what we had done in the past. And what that means is we try to get students to enroll and start saving for maybe proms or senior trips and those things and open up bank accounts. Um, teachers can also open up bank accounts. But remember, it's for the students, run by the students. And it adds to that financial literacy component. But I don't have the exact number, but I can get that if you like.
And the other one was, the other one was NASA, the Amazon Grant NASA?
Yes, yes, sir. NASA was a, a partnership we did recently with our technology program. It was Eclipse spotlighting video production. It was ran through our communication technology course over at Woodrow Wilson High School. Students were engaged to create a short video in their technology class. And then they were doing projects. They were doing storyboarding, um, let me remember, script writing, filming, editing, that type of thing. And they actually funded that for us, any of the equipment and resources we needed for the teacher.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, the next one, yes, the next one would be, uh, dual enrollment opportunities. It just to kind of look at some of the, the numbers that have we grown over the past year. First of all, on the left side, you, the different dual enrollment academies that we now have over the last couple of years. Um, Dr. Wynn, Dr. Bracy, and Dr. Marty have really pushed for the early college and to make sure that we have all these academies. Um, they, those are really growing. And if you notice, our early college numbers are, we're up to 92 this past year. I'm proud to say we're gonna be close to 100 this next year. Um, we also, the eligibility for the programs in first college is usually the college placement exam. Um, there has been some waiver with the COVID regarding that. And I'm really happy to say, as you're looking at those numbers, because we dipped this past year to 312, I believe first college was 160.
Yeah.
Sure. Proud to say currently in our first college, English 111, we have over 228 students enrolled with that. And I'm gonna give you the breakdown of the numbers because one number is gonna really make you happy, I believe. 85 students from Churston High School, 78 from Wilson High School, and 65 from Norcom High School. Those, if you've been on the board for a while, know that number's been around 25 to 45 over the last four years. So to see 65 Norcom students is really bringing a smile to a lot of people's faces.
Yeah.
Um, and so we're, we're looking forward to that. If I could also add, we had 13 students received either an associate's degree or a certificate, I'm sorry, in general education this past year. That's the most we've ever had in that. So, um, the governor's medallion was issued to all 13 of those students. And one last thing with the dual enrollment, um, we're looking at trying to bring back automotive and also EMT. If some of you remember, EMT was a very valuable program that we offered about eight, nine years ago. TCC fooled it because they couldn't get an instructor. But we had 25 students that were signed up for that class. EMT is so great with the fire department because when the fire department hires students as young as 19, by the way, they look and see if they have that EMT certification and they can get a door right at the beginning um, of the line for that. So we're hoping to bring that back.
What's the qualification? What is the qualification? What is the qualification of, of the EMT instructor? I mean, can?
That, yes, sir. That is the, that's one of the, um, if any of you have an EMT certification, you would all be employed currently at TCC or one of these colleges. They're hard to get because, um, people that go into that field are usually working and, you know, doing something and they don't have the time for it. Um, it's just a very limited number. So TCC's Virginia Beach campus is the main campus for offering EMT. And those instructors have not wanted to come over to Portsmouth. But, um, my understanding is we have one that is looking to come over and teach. And maybe even with this whole virtual learning, it might open that door also.
Well, I would think that it would.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, continue. Well, the next slide was questions and answer. I can, I can pause here or I can go to the next document regarding virtual learning and some of the questions that you may be frequently been asked or answered. If I can go with that one real quick. The first one will. Yes, sir.
Wait, hold on, Ms. Te- Board members, do you have any questions to Mr. Hill regarding the first hearing? None? Go ahead.
Okay. That's always good news. That means I covered everything. So
Yeah.
I'm feeling good right now. Can I just stop right now? I'm on a roll. Um, this next, this next document is, will dual enrollment be offered with TCC? Yes. Um, they're offering the same pathways and courses with minor changes. The, the big one that's showing up right now is welding. Look, I, I'm not gonna deny, and every one of you know, CTE is all about hands-on. That's one of the valuable components of CTE. That's what, why students are, are involved in it, why students accelerate in this, these programs. So obviously, when you don't have hands-on components, it's gonna be a little bit of a wrinkle, needless to say. But what we're trying to do with the welding, we're gonna offer it. The first nine weeks, it will be more of the book learning part of it. Then when we come back, if, and, you know, thinking positive currently, then the students can get in the lab. However, I wouldn't be doing my job if I wasn't thinking for the worst case scenario, right? So if for some reason we don't come back in nine weeks and we, this has to last for the whole semester. And what we can do is those students that were in welding the first semester, we can put them over in the spring and then they can pick up the lab part of it there. I've already talked to TCC and we would basically put those students there. So look at it more of a part one, part two type program. And I'm thinking the same thing with our CNA. Because with CNA, we're dealing with nursing homes. And what have been the hardest hit during all of this are nursing homes. Obviously, the liability of letting our students come in there is not going to be on the top of our nursing home list currently. So in those weeks that they don't let us do that, or in 14 weeks or 18 weeks, they are telling us that they feel like this spring, our students could come over there then and do the clinical side of it, either 40 hours a season. However, for some reason, that's not the case. There is some, um, educational components out there that are virtually that we're looking into that actually offer the clinical side virtually. And that would be probably around $170 per student. So if you're looking at maybe 20 students, I think we can manage it out of our Perkins ground. Our next question there would be, will there be any changes to the CT curriculum? Yes, we are changing the, basically, um, we're looking at all of our curriculum guidelines. We've looked at those. The competencies will be still covered, but however, we're just changing the when we will be teaching different things. Um, so in, in the beginning, say let's, let's say welding, they might have been in the lab in three weeks. Now, we're just gonna wait a while on that and we're just gonna move it around and just let our students get all of the book part of it upfront. Cosmetology is another one that you can think about. But remember, cosmetology is a two-year program. God willing, we'll be through all of this in two years. So we feel like the students would get the clinical side and barbering. So we feel like the students would get the clinical side and barbering, cosmetology, even nail tech and those programs. So have a little bit of a time on our sides with those types of programs. The next question, econ and personal finance? Yes, that's gonna be offered. That's a required course for all of our students to graduate. The credential requirement. While the state has already said that it will not be required, they're waiving that. We are still going to promote offering credentials for our students. We feel like if you get the sophomore or junior in there, they still need those credentials. We still want to encourage all of these students to give them a leg up when they graduate, whether it's virtual graduation or walking across that beautiful stage. We want to make sure that we're offering them credentials, even if the state is gonna waive that. So we're gonna continue to offer credentials. The different testing agencies are offering those virtual, they've come up with some solutions there. And then a couple of other quick questions there. CTE resources available for student support? We do. We've been working with our teachers. We're gonna have some professional development regarding that. And we're gonna listing different types of labs and simulations that they can use. Obviously, they're using Google Doc and Schoolology. EverFi is another program that we had already been using and that is covering a lot of the areas that we need. We also have HQ type, for instance, that are out there for our students when they're taking keyboarding. So we have a lot of different avenues that we can go down, I believe, and meet most of all these needs. And the last one would be our co-curricular activities. As we all know, that's a, that's a big thing that lures our students. I believe it was maybe a year ago that our own superintendent son went on one of these trips with FCC LA. So we know the value in these programs and we're gonna still offer those virtually, the state has said. And we're gonna do the competitions and those things virtually. But usually, most of those run in the second semester. So hopefully, our students will be able to still experience those, those types of activities. I think we've, we've covered some of the questions that the board had submitted and wanted to answer. But I will gladly elaborate on anything that you feel I need to.
All right, board members, do you have any questions from Mr. Hill?
Yes, I have a couple, Mr. Parent.
Yes.
It's Duncan Hines, yes. Mr. Hill, thank you. Yep. Mr. Hill, thank you. It's always good to hear from you. Usually, we're at Starbase or Norcom or TCC. I'm glad you look good. You look healthy. Glad to see you. You started talking about auto tech and I think we got kind of cut off or distracted from that. So if you could go back and talk about auto tech. And then as you were talking about EMT, you said something about the Virginia Beach campus. So are our students gonna be able to partake in the EMT class? So the, the instructor, well, at this point, I was gonna say would travel. But right now, we're talking about a virtual option for EMT for our students, correct?
Yes, yeah, and thank you for that question and give me a chance to elaborate a little bit. The first one, well, it's just the EMT. We spoke to the former provost in a, in a virtual meeting recently and she had mentioned she wanted to bring that back. So that was really great. We're working with the dual enrollment over there. My understanding is they're gonna have it offered right on Portsmouth campus. But maybe this first beginning of the nine weeks could be virtual and that teacher wouldn't have to be on campus. In the schools itself. So my understanding is they're gonna actually offer the standing course right in on the Portsmouth campus. So that's, that's gonna be a positive. Regarding automotive, if you remember a few years back, we had that program. We bussed them over to the Chesapeake Automotive Center, TCC. We had quite a few students in there. But then all of a sudden, you know, people sometimes come up with great ideas. They think they have great ideas, I believe. And they decided to put all these limitations on what students could be in that program for our Portsmouth students. And at my displeasure, I didn't feel like our students had to come up with different types of obstacles just to go into an automotive program when Johnny off the street could enroll in it online and you wouldn't have to do anything extra to do it. So they wanted to make sure that they had students in there that were successful, that made their program well. And I guess they didn't think they were filling that void. So after a couple of years of going back and forth with them, they realized they're, they were wrong in that. You cannot put extra on my. And I'm a type of person. So when they were making them fill out all these applications and making them fill out essays and making sure that they were being in our program a few years. All of us, I thought he was, that's fine, but you know, I'm not even sure what I want to do when I grow up. So I don't think that was fair to get those students to commit to two years at that point in the program, number one. And sometimes students want to find out what's involved with automotive and just give a general understanding of it. So I looked, I asked them, I said, okay, I'm gonna enroll in automotive off the street. What do I have to do? Oh, you just have to go online and fill it out. Okay, that's what we should do with our students. So do that now and we're hoping to bring that back. And as long as we can get them over there, I think we'll have quite a few students involved in that. We had a lot of students that graduated through that and went to the Toyota dealership. We had four students that worked through that. And, and we all know, there's a lot of money in the backend of an automotive dealership. Two students, I can remember, is making about eighty-five thousand dollars right now and they graduated about a few years ago. So. So that's.
Um, Mr. Parent, if I may, one follow-up on that. I know last summer, we were talking about TCC had purchased land on Airline Boulevard to make a big warehouse of VOTEC. And we talked about hydraulic forklifts and HVAC. Is that online and do we have students that are partaking in that right now as well?
What we do have is students that have went into what it offers LLC. It is a over there that offers students four legs with our existing ship to our pre-apprent program. And it takes it to the X level by allowing, bringing them to shop over there, which is down near Airline Boulevard. When they come out of there, then TCC bar core require certification in a pipe fitting. And I'm proud to tell you, we had two students, the first. Completed it through Zoom, I think July, they finished the program. So that's what we kind of did. TCC was rolling this all out. And all of a sudden, it went cold. You didn't hear a lot about it, as obviously you're asking the question. They were gonna charge our students to go there in the afternoon. Say that's up in the air. I know I presented it to you, I believe, two summers ago at the summer retreat about this. And they, they're still not, they're not doing a lot with the program as of yet. But I think they're trying to. And if we can, it's our responsibility, like we do first college.
Okay. And then Chairman, I have a question. It's either gonna be for Ms. Nguyen, Dr. Nguyen, or Mr. Hill. But as, as Mr. Hill was talking, he talked about that we have the, the minimum standard of the economics and personal finance that all of our students must take. And as I sit here and look, we have a lot of completer courses where you have to do the two to get the, the certification for that. So my question is gonna be, if we, as a board, were to make a Portsmouth stipulation on a diploma that students must do a one, two, and a completer test for their diploma to take our CTE program to the next level, do we have the courses and the staff that could handle that? And I don't need an answer because of course, we would have to discuss as a board. But I think if we're gonna make CTE a staple and that's what we want to see, then I think we need to up the ante on those completion course requirements and not just stay with the basic economics and personal finance. So I just wanted to ask that question and.
I think I may have an answer for you there. You know, the state is looking at, instead of just having a standard diploma that have the certification, making it. So I think this is rolling out in the next few years anyway. If I had my way, and I guess I'm biased, I think it'd be great if all students from Portsmouth had to have a certification when they graduated, or maybe a port, a career portfolio, some. But it looks like the state is towards that, so advanced upon. Have that certification.
Okay, all right.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for board members of, Ms. Hill? Ms. Hill, that was excellent presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Parent, I have questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Mr. Hill. I didn't want to interrupt you during your report. You know how much I love CTE.
Yes, ma'am.
My first question is hospitality. Where are we with that? And if there's a potential for an entertainment center to be built in Portsmouth and we, we're not offering our hospitality now, how are we looking at getting that back so that we can make sure that we have some students in that pipeline? Not only for our current hotel, but for the future entertainment center? Not just here, but also for students that may need to go over to Norfolk when they get theirs.
I, I would love to see that program rise up again, to be perfectly honest with you. You know, about, I think it was eight years ago, we won an award for that program with the Renaissance. Couple of things have happened, I think, that's played a part in it, and this is just my opinion. You know, when you have management that's changed probably fifteen to seventeen times at one hotel in twenty years span, that kind of hurt the continuity of a program because you get new people coming in. Another, maybe that program was not promoted as well as it should have been and got students more interest in the hospitality program. Hospitality is one of the number one growing programs, well, I should say, pre-COVID. We had industry. So we have the teachers, it can be offered out of marketing. It can be offered even out of our culinary program if we chose to do that because we already have that program. And we have it there. We have the teachers there. We have the certification. We still have the connections with the Renaissance currently. And if we have a new center, we can make those and have maybe a subcommittee. I would love for you, Ms. Allen, to be on that and we could just, you know, get that partnership going. I'm all in.
I, I can assure you, I've already spoken with the Renaissance. They are very much in favor of having PPS back at their hotel. The second portion of my question in regards to pharmacy tech, you know, was my baby as well. So with pharmacy tech, are they coming out ready to take their certification test? And besides the Rite Aid, do we have any other partnerships with any? Because there are some smaller mom and pop type of pharmacies that may be open to having some of our students there. Are there, and if maybe I can also, I have some connections with making that introduction, if maybe.
Well, we're always looking for new connections. That would be great. We also have spoken to Lawrence, I believe it is, over there in the Deep Creek area. I know it's.
It is Lawrence Pharmacy.
Yes, but they are, they are very much interested in that. You know, the pharmacy tech now is a national test when they come out of there. So our students can go anywhere once they pass that test. And I believe even with this virtual, they'll be fine with taking the course and taking the test. I don't think it's gonna give us much of a hiccup there. But we are, we're looking for more partnerships. So if you can give us some suggestions, we will take them and run with them.
And last but not least, barbering this year was, is my baby. So are we looking at them being certified coming out of the barbering portion of the cosmetology?
Yes, well, you know, the barbering is what they call now, the certification in Virginia is called a master barber. So that's the only one they offer now. So that's a good one. So they can come out of there within the year and get their hours that they need. And we're hoping to have our first barbers in the summer cutting Dr. Bracy's hair.
Okay, Dr. Bracy, let it grow out. Thanks again, Mr. Hill, for all that you do. You know I'm available for any.
Thank you.
And being open when I have to. Upcoming CTE courses and thank you for everything that you do.
I want to thank you and I just want to thank the board. Y'all have always been so supportive of CTE and just thank you. And I feel like we're like all just having a regular conversation. This virtual thing is so weird. I don't know. I'm a little, I'm a little nervous.
You did a good job. But I, I do, I'll be glad when we get together in person. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hill. And hearing no other questions from Mr. Hill from board members, we're gonna move on. And the next is Dr. Nguyen, an update on curriculum and instruction.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Patullo, members of the board, Dr. Bracy, colleagues and friends who are listening in. I am excited tonight to share reopening twenty twenty-one with you. I'm gonna ask that we share the PowerPoint now, Dean, if you can. Thank you. Next slide. So we're gonna be talking tonight about PPS learning together. This is our reopening plan for twenty twenty. And to begin, I want to share some things about the continuity of learning and our lessons from summer school, graduation results, accreditation, grading, attendance, virtual learning, our parent communication and support, and our social emotional development. Next slide, please. So in the summer of twenty twenty, we tried to identify and address the institutional gaps or the gaps that were created by the abbreviated twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. And in doing so, we were able to provide fourteen hundred and thirty-four students in grades K through eight with virtual instruction in reading and mathematics. We had eleven hundred and twenty-four elementary and three hundred and ten middle students. We had forty-five high school students who received virtual instruction through Apex and Virtual Virginia. And I want to say that this was a record number of summer school students that we provided services and support to. We typically have about six to eight hundred. And we also had two students who graduated during our summer session. Next slide, please. We also use summer school as an opportunity to gain feedback from teachers because we launched our virtual online program. And it was an opportunity for teachers to work on that end and for us to get feedback about how our students were interacting. Some of the feedback that we got from teachers indicated that the parents needed a class or session so that they could be trained on these different instructional tools such as Zoom and Google Classroom. And that the Google Classrooms needed the same format for students. And just, you know, parents and students found it challenging to have multiple classrooms. Teachers and students favorite Google Classroom with whole groups and then with small groups. And interestingly, many of our students who struggled during the traditional regular school year soared and excelled with virtual learning. And many of our students who excelled during the regular school year found virtual learning to be a challenge. That was interesting. Next slide, please. Our graduation data indicates that we had nine hundred and twenty-six total graduates. And of those, three hundred and twenty-one received advanced studies diplomas and three hundred and twenty-seven were honors graduates. A hundred and fifty-seven of our graduates earned college credits through TCC. And they earned over nineteen million dollars in scholarships and were accepted at over eighty colleges and universities. And we had some outstanding virtual graduations and drive up opportunities for students to receive their diplomas. Next slide. Moving into twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we want to reflect on the fact that in nineteen, in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we had fourteen schools that were accredited and five schools were accredited with conditions. In the next two years, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two, this, all the Portsmouth schools will be accreditation waived. In fact, all the schools across the state will be accreditation waived. And this will allow our schools to focus on the academic and social emotional well-being of students and staff as they will not be using SOL testing to determine accreditation. But testing may be used for a growth measure. Next slide. In Portsmouth, we will be launching our virtual learning and we will be using the Schoology Learning Management System. We will also be using Google Classroom, Zoom online, pre-recorded lessons. Students will be given activities, tasks, quizzes, projects to complete for grades. And I'm proud to say that we will be providing devices for all of our students. Our pre-K through one students will receive iPads and our two through twelve students will receive Chromebooks. Next slide. In helping our staff maintain consistency and making sure that all of our students will be in graded consistently, we provided structures through the Office of Curriculum Instruction with input from our principals and our teachers. We developed a weighted grading scale where test projects, task performance assessments count for thirty percent, quizzes twenty percent, classwork forty percent, and homework completion only is ten percent. In addition to that, we are requiring that students be given a minimum number of assignments in each content area. And those listed there, English five assignments for each of those categories under the weighted grading scale, science three to five, social studies three to five, and then mathematics is broken it out by elementary, middle, and high school, as you can see. Now, this is a minimum number of assignments. Teachers are certainly welcome to give more. But we want to make sure that all students have an opportunity to provide multiple, make multiple attempts at, at showing their success. Next slide. In addition to that, we've asked you, we've had questions before about how will we count attendance with virtual learning? And so the Virginia Department of Education has given us some guidance around what that can consist of. We have two things that we can look at. We can look at time-based and we can look at task or product-based. Time-based means that if we are reme- Time-based means that if we are remote, this would be the online lesson. It would be the login time, the activity log, the time logs and the phone calls or chats or emails that would indicate that the student has actually accessed the information. And then there would be task or product-based, which would include the assignments and emails and phone calls and other things that the student has done to show that they, and they have submitted a task or a product or an assignment. Next slide. Our focus this year is on consistency, collaboration and communication. One of the things that we realize is that it's important for us to all embrace the fact that we are entering a new paradigm in education and instruction. With that being the case, it benefits our staff, our teachers, our students and our parents if we have structures that are consistent across the division. And as such, our teams have been working diligently all summer to create these materials and develop these structures so that we can roll them out in the fall. The Office of Curriculum Instruction has restructured the pacing guides to include information that will support the learning gaps and the instructional gaps from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. We are training all of our staff. We have launched a division-wide instructional technology training that has just been masterful in the way that Ms. Jennifer Thomas and her team and Mr. Sleifer have supported teachers and staff and making sure that everyone is trained. We're requiring our administrators as well as our support personnel to be trained so that everyone is on board with what we're doing for student learning. We have a master schedule template for each of our grade levels. And Mr. Sleifer, if you could share those at this time, I can give you a view. We'll start with the pre-K. And I want you to keep in mind that these are templates. And so, what we have done as a team from CNI and with the middle, elementary, high school and preschool administrators developed a master schedule template so that the schools can use this as a guide in developing their individualized master schedules with teacher names and times and so forth. As you can see, the preschool master schedule includes for virtual direct instruction, which we are focusing on for the first nine weeks. We will have a series of activities and we anticipate that students will not have to engage in online. They will engage for about forty-five minutes. The rest of the time, they will have activities that they can focus on and the teacher will work with parents to ensure that they are able to access those things. Backing up just a minute, I want to impress that we are very attuned to the fact that this is a learning curve for our parents, just as it is for our students. As such, our principals and teachers will be spending time during the first week of school introducing our parents to Zoom and Schoology and helping them understand how to navigate our instructional tools. We also want to make sure that we have as much support for them as we can. And so, teachers will be working closely with parents, helping them as they assist their children with their online learning and their online activities. Let's go to the elementary schedule. The elementary master template provides about seventy-five minutes of instruction. And as you can see, this is the framework that we've given principals to work from. It outlines that teachers will meet with groups of students or whole, they can meet in whole group or small group for about fifteen minutes per content. And we are also weaving in behavior intervention, gifted and talented, ELL. They will also have their encore, and we anticipate that there will be pre-recorded lessons for them throughout the day. And there will be opportunities for them to also engage in office hours with the teacher. Our high school schedule is next. And this master schedule shows that we have about sixty minutes of time online for students because most of their work will be done with their projects and activities. And again, teachers will be using NearPod and Zoom and so forth to interact with students. There will be more content focused. They will also be able to participate in their music, art and physical education, just as they will be in elementary school. All right, we'll go back to the PowerPoint, please. Yes, can you go back to the next slide, please, Dean? Thank you. We also have streamlined a lesson plan template. And this will enable our teachers to hopefully feel a less, a little bit less stressed about the lesson plan format that we've put out before. Our team has provided a sample for them to utilize, and it's much more simplified. And it will enable them to work together within their teams and to build their lesson plans daily and weekly. One of the things that my office has recommended across the division is that we work within teams, especially in the elementary schools and in the content areas. And that we provide materials that all can access if they're on the same grade level or they teach the same, same content. So, if you have a group of second grade teachers who are working in reading and language arts, they can all work from the same lesson plan because it is a virtual lesson and they can use some of those same documents. And we recommend that they do that so that it will be simpler for all of them. We want consistency across those grades, pre-K through eight. We are looking to have parent involvement and provide support, and then we have that division-wide graded scale. Next slide, please. Our parent support and communication is a very vital part of the success. We have received numerous emails from parents with questions and concerns about what this will look like. And so, we are prepared to provide support and resources for them on the technical pieces of this. We will use YouTube videos to incorporate lessons for parents on how to work with students and how to access online resources. We also plan to air some of those videos on PSET for parents. Our schools are providing already weekly updates and emails and newsletters to keep parents engaged and informed. You're going to have virtual lunches and parent coffees with administrators. And then the parents can receive some technical assistance by contacting their child's school. It's going to be imperative that our, that our schools and parents develop really strong partnerships because we are working together for this. We will have virtual camps with our EL parents, our English language learners, and our teachers will be holding virtual office hours. Next slide. Social emotional development is a very serious part of this as well. And so, we are working together to create PBAIS lessons that will be incorporated. We have our behavior interventionists, our parent liaisons, social workers and specialists providing support to small groups and individuals, individuals virtually. And our councils will work closely with parents and staff to provide support for students. And one of our schools is even considering a virtual therapy dog where that, that dog will come in with its handler and work virtually with students or provide lessons to students to help them stay connected to the schools. We think that's pretty exciting. All of our administrators, counselors, behavior therapists, teachers, ISS coordinators, nurses, parents, everyone is committed to doing whatever we need to do to help our students be successful. We know that this will be challenging. We also want people and everyone to understand that this will be fluid because it is new for all of us. And there may come times that we have to make adjustments, but we will be sure that we are communicating that and that we are all focusing and keeping everyone informed. Much of our guidance has come from the Virginia Department of Education. And just this week, we learned that they are launching a virtual learning plan. That plan has not been released yet, but once that plan is released, and we already know that we, that we have some of the, most of the components that they have put in that plan. But once it is released, we will revisit our plan to make sure that everything is aligned with the Virginia Department of Education. I'm very proud to announce that today we learned that our, we had to submit an instructional plan to the Department of Education for approval for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. And today, we learned that that plan was approved by the Virginia Department of Education. So, I'd like to give a shout out and kudos and thanks to all of our wonderful staff because they have worked diligently and we've been working very closely with all of our principals and teachers and some parents to get information and to pull these, these structures together and make sure that we're ready and prepared when students return. Are there any questions at this time?
I have a couple of questions. Can you talk about, can you talk about pre-recorded lessons? How is that going to, will the teacher do that at their home or they, will they come to a studio? Or how is that going to work?
They can typically do it from any, any, any place. They can do it from home, they can go into the schools. We're not requiring our teachers to come into schools, but if there are those teachers who would like to be in their classrooms because they have materials available, they can be there to pre-record their lessons or they can pre-record them at home. It can be done virtually anywhere.
Good, the second question is Schoology, that's part of Power School. Talk a little bit more about that.
Schoology is a learning management system. And what it allows us to do is to sort of create a warehouse where we can put everything. The teacher can go in and create a class. It's, it's, the teacher can create a class, they can put lessons in there, they can have group activities, they can give access to other teachers, they can have grades there, parents can go in and view assignments. It allows us to have a virtual warehouse where we can all work together and keep everything in one place and make it easier for the teachers, the parents and everybody.
What about security? I mean, how, how does security, I mean, if I go in and I want to see my child's work, how is the, the security privacy protected?
Just as we do with any other program, but Mr. Sleifer, I think you're more qualified to speak to that than I am.
Hi, good evening. You know, Power School uses, uses all of the standard security measures, you know, in order to protect, you know, our student data. Our Schoology, I should say. Schoology is, and again, this is, you know, this isn't their first turn, you know, time around the block either. Schoology is one of the largest, one of the most used student information systems and LMSs in, in the state of Virginia and across the country. We're very fortunate that there's a tight integration with Power School, which is our student information system, which, which helps that security because they're using what's called APIs on the backend to move data. So, they're not going outside of systems to move data around. So, I think we're very confident that, you know, that we're going to be, we'll be very secure and we're going to be able to provide lots of great information to our parents through this system. That's another plus is that parents will be able to go into this system to, to, to see what's going on in the classroom and with their children, so.
And I think the other thing, the other thing is it's a very stable platform. This is something that we've been working toward for a long time. We had plans for Schoology before COVID even came about. And so, it was, it was very timely, in fact, that we were able to go ahead and launch it because we'd actually already held the meetings and we were in the process of considering it. And so, one thing I will say about this is that while this has been a very challenging, unfortunate and horrendous situation, we have certainly been progressive and it has demonstrated how strong our staff is and how much we were prepared in spite of the fact that we didn't know this was coming.
Gotcha. My last question is, we hear a lot about, you know, now that students are going to be, remain at home and you hear a lot about students that are become depressing, depressed, depressing. And you hear a lot about suicide and things like that. And you talked about counselors that will be working with the parents and the teachers. How are counselors going to be working, say a parent calls, what, I mean, recognizes that their child needs some special counseling, seeing some attributes of things are not going well at home because of, because of, of being locked up all the time at the house, not being able to get out as much. How are counselors going to work with students, I guess is my question, virtually?
I think the biggest key is communication and getting some understanding of what the students' needs are. Again, I mentioned earlier that it's important for school, for parents to work very closely with their schools. Virtually, counselors can meet with students independently, just as we do now in the private sector. There are a lot of therapists out in the private sector who are doing virtual therapy online with their clients.
Right.
Our counselors would be working individually with students, trying to get information and then reaching out or helping them reach out for resources, just as we do when we are face to face. We have social workers, we have our behavior interventionists, we work with community agencies and we will probably be doing more partnerships with them to make sure that if we have students who are identified as having some individual needs, we can provide those services to them throughout community agencies.
Okay. Board members, do any of you have any questions of Dr. Nguyen?
I had a couple of questions, Mr. Parent.
I do too. This is Tamara Shumay.
I'll probably email most of them, but I, I guess with the scheduling, I was, I was looking at the screenshots I took, it seems kind of tight. Just to make sure.
It is.
So, will they definitely, the teachers definitely have time to plan at the end of the day if they're doing those virtual parent questioning sessions at the end of the day as well?
Yes, we anticipate, we've left a hundred and twenty minutes at the end of the day for teacher prep time. They're also going to have their planning periods throughout the day. As I said, this is the template, and so, the principals will drop this, take, use this template to create their master schedule. We, I made it very clear that teachers are still to have their lunch break and they are to have their planning period. And so, in addition to this, they have their planning period, which encompasses the time that they can meet together as a team and they can plan together and they can also do individual things. I'm also encouraging teams to work together to create lessons. If all teachers are teaching first grade, then they can work together to create all, create all the lessons for first grade. They shouldn't be working in a silo with that, and that will hopefully help to ease some of the stress around planning independently because we're doing it as a team.
Okay, and I know I mentioned at the last meeting, what kind of training is going to be done for this huge implementation? It's, it's a big transition, it's different. And virtual teaching, we talk about learning, but virtual teaching may be not as easy for many of our teachers also as far as moving to this new way of learning and teaching. What kind of training is going to take place? How long would they have before the start of the school year, that sort of thing?
Well, we've already started training teachers. We launched the training for the actual learning management system. Earlier this summer, we've been training teachers on Google Classroom. We're training teachers on Zoom because Zoom is the platform that they will use to do their pre-recorded lessons. In addition to that, keep in mind that we have content coordinators, content supervisors and specialists who will be pushing in to work directly with teachers. And they have already set up times during pre-service week and they will be actually working with teachers. They can actually go into the classrooms, they will help them build lessons, they've already done the pacing guides. And all of that material, the curriculum material is placed in our system called Clever. And the teachers can access it there. Any teacher who is struggling or is having, you know, some angst around this, we encourage the principals to, to talk to them individually and then we can set them up for specific training with a specialist in that area. As I said, you're absolutely right, this is a major undertaking. But at this point, we are, and you know, I tell my staff all the time, we are building this ship while we're in the water. So, it's a learning curve for all of us. And, you know, I want parents to understand that we, we know that this is a struggle for them, but we're trying to do everything that we can to, to meet the needs of everyone. And in addition to that, our teachers are going through stress about it as well because all of you who work from home on Zoom know that we are probably working harder than we do when we're in person because we're engaged all day long. But the schedule that we created doesn't. But the schedule that we created doesn't keep the kids tied to the computer the whole time. You know, there are fifteen minutes that they might have with the teacher. And then the recommendation is that this is the time that you will work on, on this subject. You work on English at this time, math at this time, depending upon who your teacher is.
Okay, and, and I have just two, two final quick questions. Mr. Parent mentioned, uh, counseling, but I feel like encore is just as important, especially when it comes to art and music. Because those can be therapeutic because of, a lot of things children may be enduring because of the pandemic. So approximately, how much time I couldn't catch it, will Encore actually get?
Twenty-five minutes a day.
Twenty-five.
I have twenty-five minutes for Encore. And in addition to that time, we're setting aside some time for them to have the social emotional lessons. And have interaction time to, um, to work with behavior interventionists and so forth. And so, um, they will have that each day. Keep in mind that we had not yet gotten any guidance from the Virginia Department of Education around seat time. Because that's been waived. Now, when we get the virtual learning plan, it's my understanding that there is recommended seat time in there. So if that seat time is more than what we have, when I say seat time, I'm talking about online time for the students. If that seat time is more than what we have recommended in our template, then we would revisit that and we would make that adjustment. But based upon the research from our, from what we know, this is the recommended time that we would have. And it, you know, it's by grade level.
Okay, and, and my last question is, uh, when we, uh, talked at the last meeting, it was mentioned that, uh, sped teachers would be in the buildings. And, and I, I asked the question then, and I'm going to ask again now, how do you make the determination? We, we were saying that we're starting virtually because it's not safe for teachers, you know, to be in the buildings. So are we saying it's safe for sped teachers to be in the buildings and not, uh, generally at teachers, how do we make that?
Well, I think we've done a survey to determine which teachers would be comfortable returning to the building or which would be comfortable virtually. And in doing that, um, we recognize also that there are certain special education students and English language learners. That we will be bringing back face to face. It's not a very large number. For special education, it will be IEP driven. So, uh, and special education has also done a survey with their parents. And many parents have indicated that they will be keeping their children at home for virtual learning. But for those few, and I think Ms. Battle Hardy, uh, would agree that it's about forty-five to fifty students. Who will be returning, but they will be spaced out in their, in their base school. So they'll be spread across schools. So you may have two or three students in a school.
Okay, that's not a large number, okay.
Right, and then for our ELL students, I believe there are about ten. And Dr. Calhoun has indicated that those students will be identified by the, um, as level one students.
Okay.
So it will be our highest need students there. So we're not talking but about maybe seventy students total for both programs. And for those teachers who will be returning, of course, we will do as always and make sure that they are socially distancing. And using all of the safety precautions and they will be trained in that as well. And, um, I think that will pretty much be it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Let me add to that, Reverend Matillo. If you remember, in the governor's, um, phase plan, in either phase two or phase three. We're required to offer those services to sped and ELL. So that's why even though we said we're going to start virtually, we have to make that provision for that, that particular group. So that's why, you know, Ms. Battle Hardy did the survey with the parents to see who was actually interested in it. So from that, um, as you hear later when Dr. Simmons, uh, speaks. How we had to look at how we're going to get these students to school who are interested in taking part of what, what we can provide for them.
My, my main concern was make sure that the teachers had the option, you know, out there to return now, depending on health issues and things of that sort.
Right, and it, it would be the same thing with them as if, if we were in the, the hybrid model. We would look at those teachers that, that were able to attend, to provide the instruction. And then if they weren't, then we would look at those teachers that were willing to come in, we would tap them first.
Right.
Thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Shumate? Ms. Shumate?
Yes, thank you. I did, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I by no means, uh, am an IT person or extraordinary or anything related to that. But my husband is, and he asked me something, um, a couple of weeks ago about the servers. Uh, because of the amount of students that were going to, to possibly be working on, um, their schoolwork during the day. Do, did we get some type of reassurance from the companies that, uh, we wouldn't have to worry about a potential crash? Due to the amount of students that will, uh, be on that particular software or system at that time?
If I may, I think that one's for me.
Mr. Nguyen?
You know, um, yeah, continuity planning is, is what, is what we do. In order to make sure that, that we have enough capacity or bandwidth for, uh, delivering services to, to, uh, to students and staff and faculty. One of the great things about where we've positioned, um, our services, our IT services. Is that we've moved most of our services to the cloud. You know, just as an example, you know, Zoom, when we, before we started this pandemic, and I'm just going to use numbers out of the air. I don't think this is, uh, completely accurate. But Zoom, when they started out, was, was serving maybe three million customers. Think about where they went to and they scaled to, and here we are on this meeting right now. And others, just like us, leveraging this product. It's almost a hundredfold what Zoom was able to do, uh, to expand. So these companies know very well what it takes to, to, to plan for these types of things. And, you know, we certainly talked to, um, uh, we ingrate in our contracts to have certain availability. You know, they, they call it four nines, you want ninety-nine point nine-nine percent availability. And that's, that's kind of the sweet spot. But, you know, we, we get guarantees from our companies that, that we do have these types of availabilities. But I, I will say this, um, you know, technology as we all know it, it can be very frustrating sometimes. And we're going to have times, it's not, it's not if, but it's when. We're not going to be able to get to some of those services. Because there's a lot that goes on between that Chromebook or iPad that's sitting at the desk of that child. To, to the Zoom call or to that LMS. So it's how we respond to those things that are going to be very important.
Awesome, thank you so much. My next question, um, we talked about, well, I'm sorry, Dr. Nguyen, you spoke about the office hours. So with the office hours, are there going to be after hours for those parents who have to work during the day? And may not have the availability to call? So, um, do we have shifts as an option at all? Or is everything going to be during the, the working day?
We are holding teachers to their contracted time. While we understand that parents are working as well, our teachers are, they're working. And they also, many of them have second jobs. Many of our teachers work for Lyft and Uber and Instacart and they drive for Amazon. And they too have families. And so, um, the recommendation was that we stay within our contracted time. We, that is why we have, uh, anytime, anywhere learning though, with the pre-recorded lessons and the activities that parents can access at home. And what we recommend is that parents email teachers or reach out to teachers if they have specific questions. I, I know it's a hardship, but as I said before, it's a learning curve for everyone. And, and virtual learning, as we see it, is not going to go away. This is launching something that we will, uh, be using as a tool, uh, for the rest of our, uh, our educational experiences. Because it will enable us to expand our learning beyond the, the regular classroom.
Thank you, and my last question, oh, you spoke about mental health. And some of the concerns that I know we're going to face. Did we ever consider to have like somewhat of a hotline for, uh, students to be able to call, uh, during this time? Or could we consider?
We've never had that discussion. And part of the reason for that is that we really don't have qualified mental health. Mental health trained individuals that can, uh, service those students. We do have counselors, our counselors are trained in school counseling and they can do, uh, some, uh, vetting, I guess of that. And they can, um, provide resources for students, but they are not licensed clinical, uh, counselors, counselors. And so we don't have a hotline, but what we do is we provide hotline numbers for our students. Through the Department of Social Services and other, uh, support services that are in our communities. And we work with those individuals to try to locate resources for our students.
Awesome, so when we're giving, um, our parents and our guardians this information about the online process and homeschooling and everything. Would it be possible for us to also add the counseling hotline numbers that we do have, uh, within the community? So that?
I think we probably already do provide that. We may be providing it through our youth risk and our student services programs. Um, I'm sure that our counselors have that information and, uh, we can certainly put it out there for our parents as well. I think anything that we can do to partner with our community programs and provide that, that information to parents and students will be helpful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have one final question that just popped up.
And when you're done.
Oh, no, no, you go ahead, you go ahead.
Okay, following up with, uh, uh, board member Shumate's, uh, questions. I, I guess as far as, uh, the parental part of it and making sure our parents that we know that this is a new process for everyone. And so how, how are we? Are, are we doing virtual, uh, trainings? Or how are we reaching out to parents to get them, uh, onboard and involved in this?
One of the things that we've asked principals to do, uh, and teachers during the first week. As they are doing their weekly introductions, getting to know the students, getting to know the parents. That they reach out to parents and, um, provide opportunities for them to learn how to do these things. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to have, you, some of the schools are using YouTube videos that parents can access. Because we know some of our parents are, uh, more, uh, computer savvy than others. And so we are providing YouTube videos, um, that they can actually pull up and they will walk them through the steps. This is what you do on the computer, you, you hit this to get here. And then you, um, go to this, uh, place to get this. And so it's going to be a step-by-step process that they can access and learn how to do that. In addition to that, we will have videos on Pset that parents can see as well. And they can watch these, you know, um, in their leisure time. Um, and it'll be sort of like a how-to. And then we'll work, and then teachers will be working with them, uh, as they build partnerships with them to help their kids. So the first week, we have really asked teachers to try to take that time to not just work with the parents. But we have students that will, will need a lot of training with this.
And also, um, at what point do we plan to bring the community or the parents? Into this new school year and what to expect? And, uh, I, I, you know, it's, like you said, it all sounds wonderful on a piece of paper. Until, yet, until you really get into it and the people have so many questions. And, uh, also, I, I, I think, like you said, communication, collaboration. The teachers need to reach out with all, to all of these parents. And also give them information on how they can reach them by email, virtually or whatever. But also the fact that when these parents call, they need to respond. Because we, we get it back that they email, they call, they talk and people don't respond. And we, I, I don't want to hear any of that and I know the other board members don't want to hear. And also, this, this schedule is very, you know, compact, what you do, when, when. But this is virtual learning. It might be harder for some or whatever. But we also know this, that it's not like being in that classroom from eight to four or whatever. So to me, and I understand what you're saying about keeping the teachers in their contracted times. But we also know there's a lot of leeway in this virtual learning at home. So to me, it should be expected that they can go a, a little bit beyond. To, to reach out or, or, or correspond with these parents as well. Because, I mean, we, we know what tele-learning, virtual learning, it is not, it's not like being in that classroom with those students. So I just want to ensure that our parents are being communicated with effectively. That when they reach out for these teachers and principals, that they are responsive. And, uh, because we will get the calls. And, and, and personally, I want to get the call if it's not being done. Because this, this is something brand new. And I, I thought we talked about it, our last meeting, something about the help. Having like a help desk that they could call. Call in to if they had questions. Because like you said, a lot of them are not, uh, computer savvy and stuff like that. But I thought we did discuss that. I, I don't know what happened to it, but that, that might be a good, uh, a good thing to, to look into. And also, excuse me? Hello? Oh, okay, and also the, uh, the kids that might have some problems or whatever, uh, mental health issues. I know that, uh, our counselors are basically education, uh, guidance counselors. But, um, I thought we also had psychologists.
We do. We do, and our psychologists work with our special education population and they also work with our high need students. Ms. Battle Hardy, you want to speak to that?
Well, I mean, is that a, is, is that like a resource for, say, a parent call and say something's going on with the child? I mean, I thought we, about ten psychologists or?
Yeah, yes ma'am, um, Mrs. Williams, our school psychologists will be really available to assist our families and our parents and students. They would need to be contacted by the school, the school principal can reach out to the school psychologists. And they will definitely, um, provide services as well as make linkage to, to community-based, um, services.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we understand there will be a strong need to repurpose, um, a lot of our positions. And I want to get back to one of, a couple of things that you mentioned. First of all, we do have a system for accountability. We recognize that people are working independently and that we want to make sure that everyone is engaged. And that parents are getting, getting responses to their questions and their phone calls. Every teacher will be required to maintain a log. And we developed a log, um, that will, um, show the interactions that they have by student, by parent. What type of interaction it is, and the principals will be monitoring that on a weekly basis. So, um, if there are parents who are not being communicated with, I would strongly encourage them to contact the principal. And our principals are being very responsive. Keep in mind that our assistant principals will be more actively engaged with this as well. Because they will be, uh, sort of re- restructuring their roles as well. Everyone will have to be on board, um, and we may be using people differently. You know, we have, as I said, we have parent liaisons who can help us with this in our schools and we're very fortunate to have them. So we recognize that it's, it's going to be different. And there may be some, some lapses here and there, but we don't want them calling you either. And we don't want them calling us, we want everyone to have a positive experience. And so we're trying to put as many structures as we can in place to make that happen. Um, as far as the help desk, we did have a conversation about it. But we don't have the current staff to manage a health desk, help desk. So that would be a board decision because it would require us to budget a position. And even with the help desk, um, we would have to have enough people to, to handle the volume of calls or, or needs that the parents have. Right now, we're planning to do the best we can through our schools and our IT department and our instructional staff. And our TRTs, our teacher, resource teachers. We want to, we want to make sure that we can provide as much service as we can to parents. And, you know, should the board decide that we can afford and, and can have a help desk, we'd be, we'd be happy to have that.
Well, we, we, we will see how that goes. I mean, um, I, I, well, anyway, I think, I think you do. Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Duran, maybe this is for you. Oh, I'm sorry. Who is that?
It's Ms. Allen.
Ms. Allen, go. And then Barnes?
I think Barnes.
Allen and Barnes. All right, go Allen and Barnes. And Atkinson. All right, go ahead.
One of my first questions is we've spoken about the parents. And now I'd like to talk about staff and how are we making sure that they have support? Maybe, how strong is our EAP? This is, although it's also new for the students and for our parents. This is going to create a lot of stress on our staff and I want to make sure that we have some things in place for our staff. So that's my first question. How are we fortifying our staff?
One of the things that we're doing is making sure that we provide as many structures as, as we can upfront for our staff. Maintaining that communication, encouraging them to, to let us know what their needs are. And recognizing, as you said, and I thank you for that, that this is very stressful for them too. Being at home, some of our teachers were able this summer to have that virtual learning experience. And they gave us feedback around how much work it entails, how difficult it can be and how challenging it can be. And so our principals are working within their schools to create as much support for teachers as we can. To help them. So that's why we're, we're encouraging them to work together in teams. To build upon the individual strengths and use them collectively. And to reach out when they need help. Our TRTs, as I said, our teacher resource teachers are in the buildings. And they are providing tremendous support for our teachers in the training and guidance around how we're launching this instructional tool. Ms. Duran can speak more specifically to EAP because that is handled through our human resources department.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. EAP actually technically falls under the finance department, but we do work very closely with it. We've provided the information about how employees as well as their families can contact EAP as a resource. And there's a weekly email that goes out to all staff that includes information about EAP. There's a thought of the week. And so that goes out from Sharon Moore, who works in Dr. Nguyen's office. And also works on the EAP team that we have. And she sends that out every week with a word of encouragement. It includes information on how to contact EAP and it also gives some type of tip about wellness. So we're constantly informing employees about EAP resources.
Thank you. If we're, is there going to be, not like a convocation, of course, we're not having a. Pep rally this year, but is there some sort of plan for our incoming teachers? And if so, could there be a component of maybe the psychologist giving just another. Opportunity to talk about stress? You know, the trigger points, if you know your trigger points of stress, how to make sure you. Deescalate stress during this environment, just to have somebody participate during whatever the onboarding situation is. And if we have brand new teachers, we're going to have brand new teachers going into a brand new situation. And then while it's new to us, it's going to be frightening to a new teacher that's coming into a situation. So I want to mitigate the opportunity of people saying, you know, this just isn't for me because this is a new situation. And it's not what they were trained, how they were trained. Teaching is different. So that, that's something that I wanted to ask about. And is there any opportunities going back to the help desk discussion, Board Member Williams was stating? Could there be maybe virtual office hours that the IAs could be of assistance to? Families that can sign up for timeframes if they're having struggles getting situated?
The instructional assistants, you mean?
Could they, could they provide some maybe?
Actually, instructional assistants will be assisting teachers. The instructional assistants that we have are largely assigned to kindergarten, special education. And I think that's it, right? Kindergarten and Spade. And so the kindergarten instructional assistants work with the teachers around our paths. For our kindergarten students and they provide a lot of support for that. So most of their time will be taken up with that. And then our special education instructional assistants are assigned because of the accommodations in students' IEPs. And if we pull them, then we won't be able to provide the services that we need. So that might not be a possibility, but there are other classes of employees that we could possibly look at. During the time that we're working virtually, if we need to repurpose some of those positions. And so I guess it's something that Dr. Bracy would look at with our, with us as a team. And maybe, you know, that's a great suggestion. We can go that route until we have funding for it. I do want to get, I'm sorry.
And my last question and then I'm done. When it comes to the IEPs, now that we're in a virtual type of environment, have all of our IEPs been reviewed and revamped? And kind of gone over with, because there, there, I would assume. There could be potential changes and that we're getting in front of these parents with the new IEP. Or any new version of the IEP so that they firmly understand what, what it looks like moving forward.
Yes, Ms. Allen, I can answer that question. Our IEP teams are meeting now, virtually. And amending IEPs to address specifically the individual needs of each student. So that is in the process now. We are compensating our teachers because we know they're not on a contract at this particular, particular time. But we are compensating them to amend those IEPs and all IEPs will be amended by September the eighth.
And to that point, there have been no waivers for special education or English language learners. And so we are virtually having to, well, I should say literally, having to carry our IEPs as they are written. And that is the reason that we're, we're holding these IEP meetings to revisit them. I do want to go back to your question about what are we doing to support new teachers? As you know, we do an institute each year and Dr. Ree Shepherd champions that. And she is in the process of planning a virtual new teacher orientation for our brand new teachers who are coming in. They're even going to do a virtual tour of the city. Because you know, one of the highlights of that week is the bus trip that they take around the city. So she'll be doing that and they will also have individual activities that they will complete online each day. And I believe that she is also planning a drive by meeting so that they can pick up their welcome bags. And have an opportunity to see some of the faces of people that they will be working with. So she does have plans for that and Dr. Bracy can speak to the part about the convocation and the big pep rally.
Yeah, we're, we're still working on, on that to see what that looks like. Of course, we were initially thinking that we would be able to do some type of. Drive through event, but now with the restrictions of fifty people or less. Now we have to pivot now to look at some type of virtual delivery. So we're, that's still in the works. We have to know something. So we're going to be meeting sometime next week to continue discussion on that. We're in the planning phase.
All right, Ms. Atkinson, then Mr. Barnes. Ms. Atkinson?
Chairman, Barbara, Barnes was ahead of me.
Oh, okay. But Mr. Barnes?
Thank you. How would the Spade teachers manage being in class along with having an online group as well?
How would the special education teachers manage being in class as well as an online?
Will you have an in-class group along with an online group?
No, they won't have two assignments. They won't be doing that.
No.
Okay.
They'll be, they will either be face to face or virtual. Because special education teachers' class loads are typically smaller. And they'll be, they'll be assigned a student caseload based upon the numbers that we have. And I believe Ms. Batahardi and her team are already working on that. So there will be face to face teachers working with those students and then there will be those teachers who work only virtually.
Thank you. I have another question. Most board members, we are probably all in favor of a help desk. But my question is if we don't have a help desk, what happens if students can't complete assignments? What will we do for them, especially if the parent staff that we have who will be looking at those issues get backed up?
Well, what we have to understand is that teachers are managing a caseload of students now. And so when, when students aren't completing assignments, the teacher is the first point of contact for that. And that teacher will be working, reaching out to parents, doing everything that we can to support the student. In addition to that, we, we still have attendance officers who can help us maintain that contact with parents. We have our behavior interventionists who can work with those students. So all of the measures that we have put in place to support students face to face will be utilizing those same strategies as we work with them virtually.
Okay. And my last question, a parent wanted to know, will there be a virtual supply list?
There should be a supply list coming out very shortly. Our, our principals are working on their welcome letters. I've been proofreading those today and they're working on their master schedules and parents should be getting information very shortly. We will also have a day of distribution by school where parents can pick up books and, and pick up supplemental materials. And they'll be able to collect their devices. So all of that is, will be in, is in the plan. Yes, sir.
One last question, and I promise this is my last question.
Okay.
What can we do to make sure that we are getting the correct contact information? I had some teachers up here saying that it's hard to get in contact with some of the parents. And sometimes they don't make those calls because they don't have the correct information. Is, is that something we're going to use with the attendance offices to make sure we get that information or what are we going to do?
When parents register their students, we ask them to provide telephone numbers and addresses and so forth. And then when, when the children come to school, the teacher typically will have a student information sheet. So we rely upon the parents to provide that information to us. But oftentimes, they either move or they get a new cell phone number and they don't update the records. Well, all we can do is continue to ask parents for that information. In some instances, we may not have the right address. Parents might have moved and our attendance officers will make home visits. We just have to do everything that we can to get parents to cooperate with us. And making sure that they update their, their child's information because that's imperative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes, thank you Chairman, Baron. Most of my questions have been answered. Just checking off here about the IEPs. Dr. Nguyen, you mentioned about the, the pickup for the books and the technology. Is that going to be like a twelve hour timeframe, meaning like a, a morning, afternoon? And maybe like an evening slot for parents to pick those devices up?
I think it will be a, a couple of opportunities for parents to do that. I know that the technology team is working to create a distribution time and list for the devices. And I know that principals are working also. I can assure you that every principal that we have will be willing to do whatever they need to do to get these materials and devices to parents. And I know that some of them probably will hold evening hours. I mean, I have principals who have even talked about doing Saturday opportunities for parents to pick up. I do believe that we're going to do everything within our power to make sure that parents have an opportunity to come. And to pick up their child's material and their devices when they can.
Okay. And how soon are we looking to do this? Are we looking to do it the week before school? Are we looking to push this date back as, this date out as soon as possible? What's your projected timeframe on that?
I think principals are working to push the date out as soon as possible, but I believe IT has developed a schedule. Because that is a little bit more labor intensive and it requires their staff to kind of move around in the division. But I know they have a pretty strenuous schedule that they have developed to get those devices out. But I think once, once teachers are back, you know, the actual school starts, school time starts, we probably will have everything in place. But I know that principals are planning to send out welcome letters and information to parents very soon.
Okay. And just, just another question surrounding attendance. What would be a red flag for attendance? Is it a student not logging in two to three days? What, what is the recommendation for, hey, this student needs to be.
Doesn't log in for a couple of days, typically that teacher would need to reach out to the parent and to the student. We have the contact log and the contact log should indicate. Because attendance is part of the online interaction and the task and performance based interaction. It is going to be mandatory for students to check in online at least some of the time. They can't just rely upon task and performance based. And so when, when the teacher has not spoken to a student by phone or hasn't heard, seen the student on the Zoom. Or on the, during the classroom time, then I'm, I'm sure that there will definitely be some things in place to reach out to the parent. Just as we do with other attendance issues.
Okay. And would, would the attendance liaisons be going to the home or would that be a virtual reach out?
I believe that they will be able to go to homes if they need to. Now, I don't know if that would be a regular process, but in situations where they need to do that, I believe that they will be able to do that. And doing everything that they can to make contact with the parents.
With the parents? Okay, that, that, that makes sense. I think I had one, one more question. Are we at this point honoring any zone waivers or being that we are virtual? We are not.
We, we essentially don't really need zone waivers, but for those. I mean, for virtual, but what we, we are, we are taking zone waiver applications. Because we do anticipate that one day we will be back face to face.
Yeah.
So the, the plan is that we will have students in their base schools at this appropriate time. However, the good thing about virtual is we can access it anytime, anywhere. But students are tied to their schools because that's where the teacher assignments are made.
Okay. So as of right now, the zone waiver applications are on hold.
I don't know that we have that practice in place. I think, I think it's case by case. I'm not aware that we have put any such practice in place.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen.
You're welcome. Thank you.
My last question, please.
Yes, Mr. Barnes?
Well, I just wanted to, this came from a staff member. They just wanted to know, know when will they be receiving new laptops?
New what?
New laptops. This came from a staff member.
Right. So new laptops were ordered as soon as we got funding for, through the, through the CARES Act and various other means. I was supposed to receive an update on those today and these laptops are for our elementary and middle school teachers. And, and also for the IAs. So I'm hopeful that we can have those in place before school starts. So they're coming. I don't have a date right off the bat, but they have been ordered. Dr. Bracy? Dr. Bracy?
Yes, sir.
Is it possible, I'm going to follow up with something Mr. Barnes said. You know, we have students that move around and is it possible that we could do a mail out? So that we can get up to date information? I know that if kids were going to school, students were going to school, that they would have, they would have to bring home a, a new student information form. Is there a way that we could do a mail out and that could be sent back? Because I think, I think it's only something, because you've got a, a lot of our, our students in our area move around. And the second part of my question that I'm thinking about. Deals with Dean, you know, we, we've been talking all night about this whole virtual learning. And how technology is going to impact it, because if technology doesn't work, then it's not going to happen. So Dean, since we own the, since we own the Chromebooks and the technology. Is it possible either one of two ways? Is it possible for one of your IT people to go online and help a parent? Because they can't, they can't seem to. The computer's not working, something's not working. Or is it something that your staff is going to, I can call the, because you do have a help desk. IT has a help desk, so they call the help desk. And I say, well, you know, eight oh two on a problem, I can't get my computer to work. Would you send somebody out to my house to help me get the technology working or would you do it? Or would you do it, can you have the capability of actually accessing my computer to help the parent? Because technology is going to be a big part of this working.
Absolutely. So the nice thing about Chromebooks and iPads, they're a lot like your iPhones. And they, in a lot of ways, they either work or they don't, right? So when you have technical problems with a device like that, if it's not something that you can walk somebody through, it's an issue where we just need to swap it out. We're going to be in those buildings on a schedule to be able to take a look at devices and help people when they have problems with their equipment. The biggest challenge we're going to have is, and I think that we'll overcome that challenge, just like Dr. Taylor said, in the sense that our teachers are going to be right in line with what our students are doing. A lot of the how-to questions can be handled by our teachers. And through our IT, and with the exceptional ITRTs that we have under Gen, they're teaching those teachers how to use this technology and how to impart that on those students. So that's one part of it. The other part of it is, is as we go down this path, this new path that we're going down, we're going to adjust our structure based on where we're seeing the need. So to talk about what we need for support and for a help desk, we don't necessarily know what the volume is going to be like at this particular point. But we are going to schedule, we're going to be at those buildings at a scheduled time to help out with any technical issues. If my Chromebook is broken, I broke the, you know, I closed it with a pencil in it and it cracked the screen. And we're going to, and I'm sure we're going to get lots of questions too, is, you know, about, well, when I did this, or my son did this, I couldn't log in. And we can certainly help out with some of those as well. But, so we are going to be available in those buildings. The challenge for us, just like Dr. Taylor said, with the number of technicians I have, a lot of them share multiple buildings. So we've got to create a schedule that, you know, that is accommodating to our user community, yet flexible enough that we can man those buildings based on the hours that are in a day.
Okay, and Dr. Bracy, the idea about a mail-out, is that possible?
We're still going to require the students to send back the forms that we do at the beginning of the year, even when we're face to face, like the code of student conduct. So the information that's in there will ask for up-to-date mail-in information on numbers as well. So that won't change, because technically, we're still in school. So those forms will still be, because we do expect to return soon in the building, face to face.
Okay, so you're doing a mail-out with all that information, and they got to send it back?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Wait a minute, who was, who was, who was that? Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
My question is for Dean. Would it be helpful if there was a tutorial video that was filmed that could be showed on PSET? This is, you know, A to Z, how you get on, and maybe some FAQs that can be put on PSET? So that starts to get, some people are visual learners, and although you may want to walk them through it, maybe cutting them off at the pass before it gets to that, so that they have that visual opportunity through PSET. And then we can promote to start watching the PSET so you can actually see it. And we can run that several times prior to school starting. So in fact, that they have, those who already have their Chromebooks or will get them before school starts can look at the PSET for their, for a visual tutorial and a FAQ portion.
That's an excellent, that's an excellent idea. And that's, in one of Dr. Wayne's slides, she talked about resources for our parents. And that's exactly what's been discussed. And she mentioned too, putting things like that on PSET. So that's been part of our conversation as it pertains to trying to get ahead of that and give folks as much information as possible. We certainly need to drive them to where we have resources so that they can, they can really help themselves. It's that, it's that old saying, you know what I'm going to say? We got to, we got to teach folks how to fish, right? And that's, that's kind of, that's the idea. But great idea, that's.
All right.
Mr. Parent, I haven't, it's Duncan Hines.
Okay, I was trying to get Ms. Winston up. She's been waiting about an hour. Go ahead.
I thank you, and Ms. Winston, I'm sorry, but there are some questions that I have been waiting to ask, and some of them have already been answered. So I'm just going to start with elementary and move my way up through high school. But one question that is universal is class sizes. Dr. Wayne, teachers are still going to be limited on their class sizes? We're not loading 35 and 40 kids into a second grade classroom for one particular teacher, are we? We're still?
No, we're still bound by the K through class size reduction. And also the guidance that we receive from VDOE indicates that we cannot overload teacher class sizes.
Okay.
So we'll be adhering to the class sizes, because, you know, we only have set this up for nine weeks. And when we return, we want students to be with the teachers that they've been assigned to for virtual learning. So we will not be overloading teachers.
Okay, do we have an anticipated load date for the classes into Schoolology?
Into Schoology?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not used to saying that.
Everybody does it. We're working on that. As far as I know, we're on schedule, as we always are with class sizes. And as I said, principals are working on master schedules and making teacher assignments. So I think we're on target. I don't think we'll be delayed in that.
So the three or four days before school starts would be when the anticipated date for student information to be loaded into the LMS for teachers?
Not, I think we're trying to get it a little earlier than that.
Okay.
I don't want to say that that's the date, but hoping that we get it in as soon as possible.
Okay, one of the questions that came in while we were discussing, is it Schoology and Google Classroom? Or is it, are we choosing one over the other?
We use Schoology, Zoom, NearPod. Those would be the major platforms that teachers will use.
Okay, so no Google Classroom? I didn't hear you say that.
Classroom will be available, but it won't be the mainstream.
Gotcha. Elementary teachers who have been departmentalized, you know, they may teach English and social studies. Are they still only teaching those two subjects? Or they're preparing for those two subjects, and then they'll share across?
That depends on the school. The principals are doing the master schedule, but we have, we do have it set up so that they can continue to departmentalize or team teach. You know, two teachers can work together.
Okay, and teachers will be, will be taught how to share videos from one to the other?
That's part of the Schoology training.
Okay.
User-friendly.
Okay, will they be able to go one school to the other?
Yes, they can share across contents. They can share grade level information, and they can make it available to teachers across the division.
Okay. For back-to-school week, is that virtual? Is there, there's virtual trainings that are going on during that back-to-school week? What about back-to-school nights?
During the preschool, pre-service week. We do have trainings during that week, just as we do every year. Most of those are going to be virtual, very few face to face. Our principals are planning different activities within their schools, or back-to-school activities, as well as open house, virtual open houses at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. They are working to do as much as they can to keep a sense of normalcy with regard to school opening, but with the understanding that many of those things will be virtual. Now, we do have some instances where they may have staff coming into the buildings to get materials or maybe to pick up treats that they have for them. But they have systems in place to make sure that we're doing that safely.
Okay. Another concern that's come in, and this was coming in before the meeting even started, with the math pacing guide.
The math pacing guide?
Yes.
The new math pacing guide?
Yes, the instruction is basically starting week one.
Yes, it is.
With new material, not, so is, and so that, you know, that's the only information that I got. So with kids missing March, April, and May, are we looping in those review lessons with the new content with math that we're doing?
I'm pretty sure that Dr. Nichols and her team have woven that in. That pacing guide is still being developed. I know that they are not quite, they either might have just loaded it into Clever, but I know they're not quite finished with it.
Okay.
The intent with all of the teams is that we have to recognize the learning gaps from last year. And that is the reason that the pacing guide begins on week one, because keep in mind, we also have abbreviated class periods.
Right.
We're not meeting 90 minutes a day in elementary school or 75 minutes a day. We have an abbreviated class time, and we have less opportunity, you know, to work with students. And so we're starting week one. But part of that will encompass using that to train students and teachers in the new technology that we're using.
Okay.
Taken into consideration.
Okay, while we're talking about pacing guides, are we still doing nine-week assessments? Are we still doing two-week assessments?
Still uncommon assessments, and they're in the process of developing those now. We also will do benchmark assessments, and those will be determined once we get our master schedules set up.
One of the myths that has been floating around is that because accreditation is waived this year is that the SOLs have gone away. Can you clarify?
I am not aware of that.
Okay.
Accreditation is waived because we don't have an equitable way of providing the instruction to students and measuring or providing the actual test. Because, you know, those tests are given in a security environment with a proctor.
Right.
And also because the US DOE could possibly, they haven't waived it yet. But last year, they waived, at the end of the year, they waived their tests. And if they waived them this year, then that would certainly be in line. SOL tests have not gone away. We may still administer them, but they will not be used for accreditation. They will be used to determine growth if we administer those this year.
Okay, and the last question I had, we talked about the consumable books, especially for the elementary students. They'll pick them up when they pick up the devices. But one of the other concerns was they have avid readers. And so their concern was library books. Have we looked at doing any digital subscriptions?
Yes.
For library and for those services for those students? Because that is another expansion of?
Yes, ma'am, we have absolutely done that. Just talked with Jennifer Thomas yesterday about library media. And one of the things that we are looking at is providing digital online books for students.
Okay, and so the other?
Hold on just a minute, because of time, and Ms. Winston has been so patiently waiting. If you have any other questions, just email Dr. Wayne, and so that we can move on. Because I do want to get Ms. Winston in. And I, but a great discussion, there's a lot that's happening. And I know you had a lot of questions, but Ms. Winston, I'm so sorry that you have, I know this was a great discussion for you.
It was.
That you would be good feedback, but I'm going to move on to Ms. Winston. And board members, if you have any other questions, just email Dr. Wayne for instruction or whoever's appropriate, so that we can move on, okay? Ms. Winston, your survey data, impact on communities?
Thank you Chairman Parent, Dr. Bracy, and members of the school board for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you about the needs of our residents and youth in our PRHA communities. Again, I am Alisa Winston, Deputy Executive Director for Porters of Redevelopment and Housing Authority. And also on the call with me is Mr. Lawrence Adams. She is the Director of Resident Services for the Housing Authority as well. As you are fully aware, these are challenging times for all of us. And we just want to make sure that this thing's possible, that our youth are able to excel while learning virtually. Just a little bit about a history about Housing Authority. We were the first redevelopment and housing authority in Virginia. We created in 1938. We were mainly funded through federal funds under the US Department of Housing and Urban Education. I'm sorry, urban development. We currently own and manage 1,255 units in the city of Portsmouth. And we also administer an additional 1,890 housing choice vouchers in the city of Portsmouth as well. On one of the slides I provided, you will see a list of our developments, just in case you are not familiar with them. I think it. So just to show you, these are the properties that we currently manage. Dale Homes, Swanson Homes, Hope Village, Westbury, Holly Square at Westbury, Queen Square at Westbury, Phoebus Square, Hamilton Place, Seaboard Square, Westbury Cottages, and coming soon, Lexington Place. We did send out some surveys to our residents. However, only a few of them completed the surveys. I think it was about 93 in total. However, I'm pretty confident this is pretty much representative of all of our residents. And let me just add that we do have, in our housing, 863 youth that are ages zero to five. And between the ages of six and 17, we have another 1,752 youth in our communities as well. So just taking a look at the survey. You'll see that 51% at one school-aged child in the household, 28% had two children in the household, 91% of the children need laptops or computers to complete their schoolwork, about 60% need Wi-Fi access. 93% of the parents said that an adult would be in the household to assist the children with their schoolwork. 36% of the parents said they would be unavailable to assist their children with their future work or obligations. 88% of the parents were not concerned about leaving their elementary school-aged children home by themselves. And 71 of the parents indicated they had a need for school lunch for their children. So a couple of suggestions that we have. Many of our families do not have transportation. So if it's any way that you all could provide onsite services when you all provide the equipment for your tablets, your Wi-Fi access, the hotspots, if you were able to come to our sites, that would be a great help to our residents. Also, if you could entertain possibly maybe provided tutorial services onsite in some or all of our communities, that would be a great help to our residents as well. Now, we have been providing also meals and lunches to the youth in our residence and our properties. And as of, the end of this month, we will no longer be able to provide those services. You know, HUD does not give us funding to provide, you know, distribution of lunches and things to our residents. So our staff will have to get back to doing the work that HUD is paying them to do. And so at the end of this month, we'll no longer be able to provide that service, but we certainly can provide the site and the space needed to do that for you as well. So we just want the school year to be successful for our residents and our youth. And, you know, any type of collaboration or partnership we need to have, we're definitely down to making sure that we get our residents and our youth what they need. And I'm going to ask Ms. Adams if she has anything that she wants to add to this conversation.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. I just want to piggyback on what Ms. Winston has said and stress that our family self-sufficiency resident services staff work very closely with our residents. And we have a youth coordinator who works directly with all our youth in our communities. And one of our biggest concerns is the fact that generally, many of our kids are behind under the best of circumstances, and they struggle. And we would like to work with the school system any way possible so that we can help make sure that during this unexpected time of COVID-19 where everyone has to adjust, that our kids don't get left further behind.
I agree. I agree. Board members, do y'all have any questions of Ms. Winston? Very good, I mean, your survey was very enlightening. And it goes along with the discussion that we had tonight of our concerns. So it kind of, your survey had really zeroed in on the data that you presented to us, because we know we have a challenge in our city, so to provide services to our kids. So thank you very much for your survey and your information.
You're welcome.
Chairman Parent, and I know you, this is Board Member Akerson. I know you were saying, whole question, this is surrounding what was presented by Ms. Winston. Is the lunch, is our lunch schedule still going to be set the same? Or are we going to be looking into revamping that to reach those neighborhoods?
Dr. Bracy, how is that going to work?
That's, Dr. Simmons is going to touch on that. We skipped him when you went to Ms. Winston. But the lunch schedule will be similar to what we did when we. But the lunch schedule will be similar to what we did when we closed out the year in March. But there will be an increase in the number of school buses that will be out delivering meals in the community. Because we're trying to reach as many students as we possibly can. The schools will be open if they desire to pick them up. Some, certain, most of the schools will be open where they can pick up meals at the school. I think the timeframe is seven to nine, where they can pick those meals up, breakfast and lunch uh, at that time. But um, I know Dr. Simmons has more of that content that, that he's gonna share. But I guess the short answer is yes.
Well, Dr. Simmons, do you wanna go ahead? Simmons, you wanna go ahead and? And make any comments?
On that, you just wanted to follow up on that piece.
Might as well, I mean. He's muted, so. He's down here. Dr. Simmons?
Yes. Thank you Chairman Parent. On that specific lunch or just the presentation in general?
That, that specific part.
And so what we plan in food services for the beginning of the year is similar to how we ended uh, the school year. If you remember when the governor closed schools on uh, Friday, we were prepared and delivered meals on that Monday. And so we will have a similar plan in place to where uh, we will have about sixteen of our school sites open for our parents and students to uh, pick meals up. And we also have about twelve of our school buses with our router that we currently employ. Uh, she's working on now, uh, having our buses go throughout the community. And certainly some of those neighborhoods that were mentioned would be a part of that routing system, uh, where those students uh, can come out uh, and pick up meals. And we'll do breakfast and lunch all at the same time. So it'll be a double pickup. Uh, the hours that we plan are from seven to nine, but we won't uh, discourage or not allow anybody to get a meal, even if it's after nine. And the reason we went with nine is because we're trying to make sure that we coordinate with the instructional schedule. So we don't interfere in times where our students should be logged on uh, with their instruction. And so we've, we feel confident that we'll be able to reach as many of our students as we possibly can reach. This will be a little bit different now than uh, how we close the school year. Because uh, only Portsmouth Public School students will be allowed to pick up meals. And so if you remember, at the close of the year, it was open to any student age, I believe, one to twenty. But with this, it's a regular school year. And so we have to have an accountability piece. We have to know that it's a student enrolled in Portsmouth Public Schools. And so uh, we're planning to have students with ID cards. Uh, we've worked with Mr. Falk and his team to order uh, the devices to where that ID card to be swiped. They'll get one meal uh, per day. Uh, that's for the accountability pieces that we have to have in child nutrition with VDOE. And so we've been working hard in child nutrition to make sure that we've got a plan in place that will start certainly the first day of school. Right now, we're still in summer feeding, but as we transition over to September eighth, uh, that is our plan to begin the year. We are flexible and recognize that we have sixteen school sites open. But we may transition to more school buses as we uh, get into the first uh, week of school and find out that there's a greater need to have it transported. Then we're certainly prepared to make those adjustments. We've already got drivers uh, and the router um, on standby. We've got more than. More than twelve scheduled and ready to go, just in case we need to add more, we'll be ready to go at home's notice. So that's kind of.
Why is he red? What is your mom though?
Dean, could you um, could you let me into, let me back into the meeting on my other device, cause this one about to go dead?
Absolutely.
And I apologize, I, I apologize to Dr. Simmons, because I downloaded the agenda about five o'clock and I didn't see that auxiliary in there, so I apologize for you. That's perfectly fine. We're, we're okay. Were there any questions about the food service part of what I just talked about? Then did you wanna, did you go on ahead? Ms. Winston, were you through? Have you finished your presentation?
Yes, I did. Unless someone has some questions of me.
And I wanna thank you so much for participating tonight. And I'm sorry it took so long, but uh, we've gotta get school open and, and virtually, and it's all you experience, so. Thank you so much. I appreciate your patience. Yes, ma'am. And now, we can go back up to uh, Dr. Simmons. Uh, and if you need to address the auxiliary services, uh, other than food service, go, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you Chairman, uh, Parent, Vice Chairman Patillo, Members of the Board, Dr. Bracy. Uh, it's my pleasure to present the auxiliary services uh, plans for reopening. I've already covered um, certainly food service, so when we get to that slide, we can just skip that next slide, Dean. We'll start with building services under the leadership of Mr. Herbert Robertson. Uh, our building services plan is we have contracted with the um, acrylic Plexiglas uh, company to install uh, Plexiglas in all of our schools. We work with Dr. Bracy and leadership to establish that we will have these custom designed and made to fit uh, the actual shape or mold of each of our buildings uh, in our front offices. And so we've decided on front offices, uh, the um, SSO stations, because that's the point of contact for many of our um, stakeholders coming into our buildings. And we also uh, Plexiglas our uh, media centers in anticipation of students returning. So we're trying to be proactive, even though we know we're in a virtual opening. Uh, that installation with that contract, this should start the week of August twenty-fourth. Uh, got some good news that that material is on the way, uh, when it arrives. Uh, they've got the custom cut it and frame it, and they'll begin uh, doing that work the week of August twenty-fourth in all of our buildings. So not just our schools, but RLC, Emily's Bong, uh, we included in the proposal to have all of the buildings done. And so uh, that work, uh, our principals and our stakeholders should begin to see the week of August the twenty-fourth. We've got a hundred freestanding sanitation stations in the warehouse. Uh, they came in on yesterday. Uh, we will strategically place them in each of our schools based on the size of the school, which means some schools may get uh, more than others, but every school will have two, maybe three. Uh, we uh, were strategic in ordering these early, uh, to make sure that we have them and we're ready to go uh, as it relates to making sure our schools are as safe as possible. We're gonna put signage up. Uh, we're gonna go out and distribute signage to all of our schools. We've got the six-feet social distance markers that will go on our floors. We can't put them down right now because of certain, our custodians are cleaning, uh, they're waxing. But as soon as uh, some of that work is completed, we'll go out and start measuring and put those signs down. We've got signage for our windows. Uh, Dr. Bracy has instructed us to make sure it's uniform in every building. And so you will begin to see that signage go up as it relates to uh, COVID-nineteen best practices. Uh, we've also got um, six-foot social distance tape that we'll put along the hallways to give people uh, some kind of uh, idea of how to be uh, the distance that they need to stay apart even in our hallways. And so we've thought very strategically about all the signage that we need in terms of our schools. Very proud to announce that we've got our twenty-five electrostatic sprayers in stock. We've already started using and training our custodians on best practices of how to use those. You've seen a news uh, article on those, a feature on uh, our guys uh, working with those. And so in addition, we're gonna order, uh, next week, we'll come in, we'll order four more. But these will be uh, electric. And so the electrostatic ones are sprayers with the um, uh, lithium batteries. But we're gonna order ones that you can actually, they're on wheels. And so they're a little bit larger. It covers more area. Uh, just as a backup, we don't wanna get into a situation where uh, our batteries start running down and we start overusing them. And so just as a backup, as a precaution, uh, we've given instruction to all of those. And so uh, thank uh, Mr. Falk and his team for helping us make sure that we're securing all of the uh, equipment that we need. We're in the general cleaning stage right now, where we're wiping down surfaces and doing things every day. But as I said, uh, the custodians are working hard. If you go in our buildings, you know, they've got furniture out there, uh, waxing. They're stripping, we're in that mode now, but we're about to complete that process. And so as soon as that process is complete, uh, we will get, begin going out to stage our schools with all of the PPE and all of the signage and everything that we need. Uh, I get an update daily, uh, real time on personal protective equipment. I can tell you today that fifty thousand uh, adult uh, three-ply uh, masks were ordered. Uh, our warehouse manager does an excellent job uh, with the system where he updates me in real time, so I know exactly what's in the warehouse. Uh, we've spent a lot of time making sure that at Dr. Bracy's directive, that we are going to supply uh, our staff, our stakeholders with the PPE uh, that they need. We're working very closely with um, special education to make sure uh, we know that some of those teachers uh, won't wear masks, they'll wear uh, clear shields. So that those students be, will be able to see. Uh, and so uh, we wanna make sure that we have everything we need. And so I have a list of all of that PPE, the actual numbers, where we are. We're gonna develop a system to make sure that that's delivered to the principals, so that the principal ha- have uh, the PPE that they need in uh, all of the schools for uh, our staff. Next slide. We've got our social distancing plan, and so uh, we're preparing, uh, we know that it's uh, virtual start. But we've gone to every um, every classroom in the division. We've not skipped a classroom. And so we spent about three weeks in every classroom, and we know exactly how many desks we can get in every classroom. Would it be in six feet socially distance? Uh, I've given that report to Dr. Bracy, so he has it. And so we, we are preparing certainly for virtual, but even as we move into um, either hybrid situation or they come back fully, we know exactly how many students we can get in a social distance uh, situation with teacher desk and other equipment in a classroom, and we know it in every classroom in our uh, division. And so we put a lot of work and time into that effort, preparing. And so even as our exceptional children come back in, they will be socially distanced in the classroom. Those desks will be, they won't be close together. We'll follow CDC's guidelines in, in, uh, in everything that we do. What, this is a key uh, bullet here. Sometimes we miss this about our air filtering systems. And so we wanna make sure that our air filtering systems are updated. Previously, we were doing quarterly. We've moved that to by monthly, and we may even go monthly. And we also had a meeting this morning about our HVAC system, because we may have to filter those out as well in terms of chemicals. Because we know with COVID in terms of the air filtering system and the HVAC systems are crucial. And so we wanna make sure that we're doing everything. And so we're on top of that uh, as well in terms of those meetings, working with uh, our local vendors to make sure that we are uh, on top of that as well. And then I already talked about the four additional uh, electric. They're still electrostatic sprayers, but these are electric ones that you plug up, not battery-operated ones. And so we're gonna create our own PPS disinfectant team. Uh, Dr. Bracy has given us to go ahead to look at creating a, a team or group of specialized individuals uh, that we will put together. Uh, so this is in addition to regular wipe downs, regular hard surfaces, everything that we do every day. Uh, every third evening or afternoon, every PPS building will be disinfected and sprayed. Uh, we're gonna work on that schedule with principals, so they'll know uh, we have a certain uh, guideline to follow. And so as we exit the classroom or as we exit a hall, hallway, it is stamped and it says, this classroom has been disinfected. This hallway has been, so when people walk in the next morning, they can feel confident that in addition to the regular wipe down CDC guidelines, PPS is going above and beyond uh, that to make sure that people are safe and they feel comfortable uh, in our buildings. And then back in May, we established a PPS pandemic committee. Uh, we have several members uh, on that committee. We actually met today. Uh, we're continuing to meet and they've given uh, our auxiliary services team some great advice. Uh, asked a lot of questions. They've really helped us. We started back in May. Uh, and so we've continued to meet and actually, as a matter of fact, again, we met uh, this afternoon. Uh, next slide. So I talked about food services. It's of no questions right there. We can kinda skip to the next slide, Dean. Transportation, uh, we know uh, with our, our special aid, every bus will have a driver and a monitor. We'll load students from the rear to keep anybody from walking across uh, each other. We've got uh, about ten, seventy passenger buses, and we know the maximum uh, that we can get on those buses. Even if we go to a hybrid model, it's twenty-two students. And so we know even as we plan this virtual, we're planning, we're planning both virtual and getting ready for hybrid. And certainly as we hopefully will return, uh, to make sure that we're doing everything possible uh, in terms of transportation. We know right now, based on guidelines, we've gotta use a zigzag pattern. And so if one student is in the, in the back and they start and they go to the window, the next student in that same aisle has to be at the aisle. And then the student in front has to be uh, at the aisle, and then the student there has to be at the window. So it has to be a zigzag pattern in terms of uh, how they, how they sit on the bus. And so our transportation coordinator, Mr. Privet, keeps up with all of that. Uh, all of those regulations as it relates to COVID, because we have to follow uh, those guidelines uh, as they uh, come out. Uh, we will have masks available for students uh, to ride the bus. And so we've ordered both, I talked about the, the fifty thousand uh, order that came in today for adults. We also have a student order. Uh, we know that that delivery date is scheduled to be next Tuesday. So our student mask hopefully will be delivered uh, next Tuesday as well, uh, because we wanna provide a student mask as well. Uh, bus drivers and monitors are expected to wear face coverings at all times while transporting uh, students. Uh, we have ordered six-feet social distance markers even for our bus ramps. They're specially made and custom designed uh, to fit uh, the um, cement sidewalks. And so you have to have special design markers, so when those buses pull up, there'll be a marker there. Students will know where to step out, and they'll know how to maintain six feet social distances all the way into the building. Uh, those have been ordered and they expect to be late. We expect those to arrive next Wednesday as well. And so we'll unload one student at a time and maintain social distance all throughout. Next slide. If and when we get to transporting tiers, the guidelines state that we have to disinfect the bus between tiers. We can't run one tier and then automatically run the next tier without disinfecting the bus. And so we've got to build some time in when we get to that, because bus drivers and monitors have to take the time to uh, disinfect in between tiers. And so um, we're getting prepared and ready for that as well. Talked about the uh, social distance markers already outside for transportation that they've ordered. Transportation, we talked about them uh, assisting in meal delivery in terms of, uh, we thought that went very well. Uh, if you remember, uh, when school closed in terms of, we called it the magic school bus, having those drivers out there delivering uh, to make sure that our parents know uh, that they can get meals. And we want our students uh, to make sure that they get nutritious meals every uh, day. And so that'll be a key component uh, when we start back in terms of having transportation included in that. Uh, and then we'll use buses as hotspots, I think. Uh, we, we've talked about that a little bit. That is uh, that's a goal in terms of our drivers knowing, in terms of they'll be in specific areas, uh, with hotspots in terms of. I think they've got to start the buses and actually let them run some. It can't just sit there in terms of. And so we have, we've been collaborating with Dean uh, on this issue as well in transportation, so it's a collaborative effort. And then there's some of the PPE uh, that we order just for transportation. Uh, we've got PPE in terms of schools, but uh, just the PPE just for, to make sure that we've gotta sanitize and keep our buses clean as well. Next slide. And so Dr. Bracy has charged me to make sure that I'm working with Dr. James. I think you've heard, the board has heard from her in the past. And so we coordinate and work on a, uh, at least a weekly basis in terms of our conversation. Because we have to make sure, one of the things that I want people to understand about uh, auxiliary services in schools, there are some products that we can't supply. There are some products that we can't order. We have certain strict guidelines in terms of schools uh, that have to meet certain standards in terms of, and so Mr. Robinson, all our guys know those standards. And so before we deploy any, you know, we just can't send a can of aerosol or lysol to a school. It has to meet certain specific guidelines. And so we wanna make sure from an auxiliary services standpoint, we follow those guidelines to a T. And so uh, Dr. James has been very supportive of all of the plans and things that uh, we've got uh, in place. Next slide. Does anybody have any questions for delivery services?
Wow, you're ready for hybrid. You've done a great job. Thank you very much. He's done a very good job. Any questions for the board of board members?
Mr. Perrin, I do have one question. This is Sarah, if I have the time.
Short question, yes.
Mr. Simmons, thank you so much. Your plan is is beautifully laid out. Um I appreciate all the detail and all the work that you guys have done. Um because for most of the, most of the summer, we were thinking we were doing a hybrid model. So uh thank you for being prepared for both situations. My question was, um and I'm going to go back to the very first slide when you talked about putting um PPP or PPE at the um at the sign-in stations, at the SSO situation. Um the PPE that is there, I'm assuming is like they're going to be wipes and hand sanitizer and mask if uh people need them coming in. Will we have mask available for visitors into our building? Or will they need to ha- bring their own? You know, for instance, I went to Petco the other day and they had um mask available. If you didn't have a mask as you walked in, you know, you could grab one of theirs. Is the PPE that we're ordering specifically for our students and our staff? Or, excuse me, when people walk into the building, if they do not have a mask, is there, is there a box for them to grab a mask for them to have in our building? That's the first question. And the second question is, um when we talk about having the, having teachers have the opportunity to come into the building, are we giving them a specific days, like a Tuesday, Thursday option? Because I would think that cleaning a building on a five-day rotation, the way that it needs to be cleaned, would be a bit much. So have we had discussions about um teachers, if you want to come into the building, it would be on a Monday, Wednesday or a Tuesday, Thursday situation? Or is the building open Monday through Friday for teachers to come in? And those are my two questions.
All right, I I will take the first question um regarding the the PPEs. We've been focusing on PPEs for our students and staff, uh not for the public that's coming in. We have, we'll have, the signage will say that you will need a mask to enter. So that's what we've been, that's what we've been focusing on and providing uh work with Mr. Falk and the funds and looking at it from that, from that aspect. As far as the the teachers uh coming into the building, well, we don't, as Dr. Dr. Wayne mentioned earlier, we don't have uh we haven't required teachers to come to the buildings. Um we we've talked about, there may be days that 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 administrators may want to have a grade level meeting or a departmental meeting that they can do some social distancing, but that's not required. One of the things that that we're we're looking at is that we will have schedules for cleaning. So if the building is typically open from um eight to five, there may be some days that everyone would have to be out the building, let's say it, at at two o'clock when the virtual instruction ends so that the deep cleaning can begin. So that is something that we're working on now to get that scheduled out once school starts and the staff will be made or whatever. But any teacher that wants to come into the building when the building is open for uh instruction, if they want to do that, feel free, it it will be open for them to do.
Okay, I just, I I I know that there's other places that are putting dates and and weeks of the of the days of the week for you to come in and work. So I didn't know if that had been a part of our discussion. I wanted to make sure we were all clear uh in that regard. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Simmons. The next item is um if you will look at the school board meetings for next year, can't believe we're twenty twenty-one. Um if you'll take a look at that, so draft copy, we'll be voting on it the next board meeting. But um just review that um. If, do any of you have any questions?
My only question, um we don't meet in September at all. I couldn't recall. I mean, September of twenty twenty-one, we don't meet at all?
Well, there's a September uh second and sixteen, a regular meeting.
Well, I was looking and maybe it's just not on my sheet that I.
I'm looking at the twenty twenty-one.
I printed it out earlier and maybe I missed some of the print. Okay, good, if it's up there.
Twenty twenty-one, yeah, twenty twenty-one, September the second and September the sixteen.
Okay, I guess I cut it off. That's great. I'm good.
Okay, all right. Any other, any discussion concerning the meeting dates, we'll vote on it next time. The next item is a roll call vote, consideration of the minutes of June eleventh, twenty twenty, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, and July twenty-nine, twenty twenty. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, motion's been made by, was it?
Well, Sarah made it, I second.
All right, thank you. Do you get that, Kathy?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes? Barnes available?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
I am, Mr. Lamb leave, I think he left. Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Next item is roll call vote, consideration of a resolution for the reappropriation request for twenty nineteen, the general fund. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval, Patillo.
Patillo?
Second.
And we have seconded, any discussion? Uh we have um Mr. Falk here, who's going to answer any of these reappropriation questions, if you have any. And I don't hear any discussion. So Madam Clerk, it's roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines? Mrs. Hines, you don't mute, you're muted.
Sorry, uh yes, we're good, thank you, I'm sorry, yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
The next item is the consideration of resolution for reappropriation requests for textbook funds. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval, Patillo.
Patillo?
Second.
Second.
And Barnes seconded, I think that was Barnes.
Yeah.
Second. And uh do we have it, do we have any discussion? Mr. Falk is available for to answer any of your questions. I'm not hearing any di- any discussion. So Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Unanimous?
The next item is item uh three point fifteen, consideration of a resolution for reappropriation requests for twenty nineteen, pre-funded state grants. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second. Hans.
Hans seconded and who approved, who made the motion?
Patillo.
All right, Patillo and Hines, okay. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is the consideration of the twenty nineteen twenty risk management fund budget activity. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second, Hans.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mr. Falk may have some comments that you might want to make. You had some comments at our finance meeting, you might want to brief the board at this time.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chair and Parent, uh Vice Chair Patillo, School Board Members, Dr. Brace. Um you'll see that this is not a uh request for reappropriation this year. And I'll try to give you a a guideline as to why that is. If you recall, last year, at the end of the year in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we ended the year with a net deficit in our fund of two million eight ninety-seven one forty-nine. Uh mainly because five point one million dollars are sitting on the city side in our school board risk management reserve but being held by the city. So we have funds there that would cover that deficit, but they never transferred those funds over. So it in FY nineteen twenty, we actually experienced a positive net position of one million three hundred and forty-four thousand five oh four. So that is reducing that net deficit that was there at the beginning of the year. So now the deficit that we have left is one million five hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars. So really, since there's no excess funds, there's no need for reappropriation. So I just wanted to make that clear to everybody. We still have a deficit in the fund on our side, but we still have five point one million dollars that is sitting on the city side to cover that deficit if and when it's transferred over to us.
And Dr. Brace, did you have a a com- didn't you have a conversation with uh Dr. Patton regarding that?
Our conversation with her was regarding the the uh the request that we were in the process of last, last fiscal year. So at this time, we're going to reach back out again and resubmit that information in hopes that we can get the reserve that was out there.
Okay. Board members, do you have any other discussion?
Uh I I have a question.
Ms. Williams?
The risk management fund that we never received.
Right.
That we're waiting on and also the opinion from the Attorney General that we'd never received an answer for.
Right.
So I guess, you know, it's for the board members to consider, not at this meeting, but maybe uh at the September meeting or whether we need to move forward with legal action to get an answer. Because if if we don't, then I I'm not, I I really don't like the fact that we're showing a deficit on our books and they would not even transfer the money back. Although is our money sitting over there on the city side?
That's right.
But they never would transfer it back. So if people that are not familiar and you look through the CAFR and the books, then you, that we are running the deficit and they've never re-appropriated the money back to us. So if we had not able, you know, I can reach out again uh to Senator Lucas to see if she could uh make the contact with uh the Attorney General on the opinion.
Miss Carroll, have, Miss Carroll, have you, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams.
No, no, you can go ahead.
Miss Carroll, have you heard anything from the uh Attorney General, his office concerning our um request? I mean, our our opinion or to render an opinion?
No, and 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 the the response wouldn't come to me. It would go to Senator Lucas and she made that at the request of some of our board members.
Right. Well, then, Mrs. Williams, then you would, you would need to touch base with, yeah.
Yeah, I'll follow back up before and then maybe in September, if we haven't heard, then we can make the decision whether, because we need to know.
We do, we need to resolve.
Because actually, they would never admit to the public or anyone that we have the money over there because it's showing a deficit.
I agree.
In my opinion.
So, no, I agree with you. All right. Do we have any further discussion? Yes, Reverend Patillo?
It was, no, that was me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I.
Okay, no, uh Mrs. Williams, uh Dr. Patton shared with me that you um you all were, I guess it was some type of virtual meeting that you all were both attending or logged into. And I guess the question came up from you about our money. Do you remember that?
Dr. Patton and I were on a virtual meeting?
It was a forum, maybe it was a forum that you all were um.
She might have heard me say it at our last virtual meeting.
That's right, okay, wow.
She might have heard me say something about the risk management money.
Right, I thought, I thought she had, the way she explained it to me is as if that you had directed it to her, but.
Well, no, no, she she calls me frequently, but never about that.
Okay, well, she called me after she heard you say that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so she called me and that's what Mr. Perrin is referring to, the conversation that I had with her, so.
Oh.
Yeah, so she has instructed me, she's given me the direction, not instructed me. She shared with me uh what we need to do in order to try to get those funds. So Mr. Falk and I, Mr. Falk and I have um discussed it and we're going to follow up in writing to the city attorney to see if if this approach will help.
Yes, well, well, that would be great. I mean, you know, I just think we need to resolve it so that we don't have to keep carrying this deficit on our books and they have the money sitting right there. So, yeah, but you know, I I certainly can, I'll reach out to Senator Lucas and I can certainly also reach out to Dr. Patton since she said we discussed it.
I mean, she heard you say it.
Well, maybe she heard me say it at the meeting, okay, that's good.
Can I, can I ask a question real quick? Uh it's Hines.
There's still a discussion, yes, yes, you can.
Um so Dr. Brace, she said that you needed to do something else in order to get this money back that needs to go to the city attorney. What, what is the else?
There were, there were a list of questions that.
Uh we're back to that.
Yeah, back to that, it was the questions. So I need to, we're we're working on the questions and basically where we can answer, we will, and and what we can't provide, we'll just share that. And then at least that'll get us back to the table. But we'll keep you posted on on where that, where that goes.
Okay, because I was just, I was, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't anything above and beyond what we normally have to do, you know? And I believe what um Mr. Falk has done and what his staff has done and your staff has done is already above and beyond. I mean, we've got, you know, novels of questions and answers and questions and answers. And um I I don't know if I need to bring an old priest or a new priest to the next set of questions. So um I just want to make sure that we're not doing above and beyond anything that we normally haven't already done. So, okay, thank you.
Well, I agree with Ms. Williams. I agree with Ms. Williams. If we don't get this resolved, then I think in September, we need to decide, as my dad said, it's on you, then eat fish or cut bait. If this is not going to be resolved, then we need to, then we need to start legal action. I I mean, we've been dealing with this for over a year, enough's enough.
And and my, my last point is this.
Yes.
You know, they they always try to insinuate that we're holding on to money. Well, they're seeing the deficit here of of whatever. So it's nothing to be re-appropriated. We're showing the deficit and they have the five point one million over there. So I don't understand what and who we are dealing with here, except people that keep trying to tie us up unnecessarily. And we are supposed to be the stewards of our employees' money. This is self-insurance money, risk management is made up of different things that they have nothing to do with. So I'm not really sure what it is that we have to do when we're running a deficit. So what else do do they need? The numbers are there, it's in the CAFR. So they need to just return this money that we requested back to us. We've been going through this for a year.
Yeah.
For a year.
Yeah.
Really, so anyway, hopefully, Dr. Bracey uh can, you know, since she reached out to him, hopefully, we can resolve it this time without legal action. Thank you.
All right, this is Angelia Allen.
Ms. Allen? Continuing discussion.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. At this stage of the game, I, I am, I am, as one person, I'm going to advocate that after this set of circumstances that Dr. Bracy and Mr. Falk provide to the city, if we do not get that money released to us, I don't want us to keep kicking it down the can, because I feel.
I don't either.
Well, we have continued to kick it down the can, because this is going on for a year now. So at this stage, I would like Mr. Carroll to come back with what, what is it we can do and let's move forward with that? And that is my feeling on it. We're about to go into a whole nother, a new mayor, a new city manager, a whole bunch of other stuff that we don't need this going into this next administration with the same situation. So it's, it's now or never. What kind of timeframe after he turns in the documents? How long before he turns in the documentation? How long before we wait after they receive the documentation before we get some sort of answer? Time is ticking.
I agree. Amen. I'm ready. All right. Any, not hearing any more further discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Amen.
Mr. Mr. Perrin, I'm sorry, it's Hines. Following up with Angelia, so are we going to ask Mr. Carroll to come back with our next legal steps at the next meeting?
Yes.
Working under the assumption?
He is shaking his head.
Okay, I just want to make sure we were all clear.
No, we're all, we're all clear. I think we all are all clear and we're done with this. And we, you know, we, we've been asking questions with the finance meeting, and the bottom line is that we've got no answer, we've got no, there's been, the Attorney General has not rendered any opinion. So we keep, as, as Ms. Allen says, we keep kicking it down, this can down the street, and we're kind of tired of it, but I think that it's all come to an end. If we don't get some kind of answer from Dr. Patton and Dr. Bracy's meeting, and we've submitted the, the questions, the answers, rather, it's time, it's time for us as a board before the January, you city council, and we may have new board members too, that we need to get this resolved. This board needs to get this resolved, and I'm all for moving it down, okay? All right. We are now, Mr. Reverend Patillo, I need for you to, to bring us into a closed meeting, please, sir.
Yes, sir. I move that the board enter into a closed meeting under provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purpose: Discussion concerning the performance of the superintendent and the school board as permitted in a subsection 8.1.
Reverend Patillo made the, read the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hines seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Unanimous?
What I'm going to recommend, because it is nine o'clock, that we do go into, we do go into a closed meeting, but if we can only do the performance of the superintendent tonight, then at the next meeting, we can also do the school board, you know, our, our annual evaluation. I know you're tired, and we've been sitting and walking, doing everything we can to get through this. So if that's all right with the board, we are going to go into closed session, and we're going to be discussing the superintendent's evaluation. Then we'll come out and vote on, we don't need to vote on that. No, we don't need to vote. We're just going to.
Is it possible to do both next time?
I think because of the timeline, I, we really do need the superintendent's evaluation done tonight, and then next month, next meeting, we can do the board evaluation. But we really do need to get his evaluation done tonight. It shouldn't take that long. All right. All right, we are now in closed, we are now in closed, in a closed meeting. Dean, would you take?
Has he taken us into closed?
Yes. Okay. Dean is taking.
Move, move for adjournment.
Second.
Wait, Mr. Chairman, we need a certification, come out of close.
Oh, I'm, oh, that's right, we did, we did. I'm getting.
We got to do it.
Adam.
All right.
I move that each board member certified to the best of his or her knowledge, only matters that lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements which were identified in the motion to go into closed meeting, were heard, assessed, or considered on the preceding closed meeting.
Second.
There's a motion, he read it, she seconded it. Hines, yes.
Yes.
Patillo?
Yes.
Schumake, yes. Barnes, yes. Clue, yes. Williams, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
All right. Miss Carroll, we are, we are legal now. We are now in open session. Do I have a, thank you for keeping us on track. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move for adjournment.
All right, Patillo said.
Second, second.
All right.
Hans, second.
I don't hear any discussion. I assume that we are going to adjourn. All those in favor? All right, raise your hand. All right, been a long meeting, but it was a very productive meeting, and we'll take care of the other at the, at our next board meeting.
Yes, and I, I will contact Board Member Atkinson and Board Member Lamb, so we can set up our meetings for September.
Okay.
Okay, sounds great.
All right.
All right, thank you all very much. Appreciate your input tonight. It was a very good meeting, and it was a lot, especially in the structure. There's a lot there that people need to know, and we need to get out, and it's all about communication, because this is all new to all of us, and it's going to be new to teachers and parents and everybody, students. So anyway, good meeting. Thank you all very much.
Also, thank Dr. Bracy, Dean, for working hard, putting, putting this together.
Yes, Dr. Bracy.
I appreciate him and them.